Good afternoon, City of Laredo. City Council meeting. Joey Agueta Public Library. The date is September the 18th, 2023. 5:30 PM. 1120 East Calton Road. All stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Moment of silence, please. Thank you, may be seated. Mr. Secretary, roll call, please.
Mayor Dr. Victor D. Trevino.
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember Daisy Campos Rodriguez. Councilmember Melissa Cigarroa.
Here.
Councilmember Alberto Torres Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Ruben Gutierrez Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Dr. David Tyler King.
Here.
Mayor Proton Vanessa Perez. Councilmember Alyssa Cigarroa. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know that some councilmembers forgot that the meeting was here, and they're on their way from downtown over. So I think Councilmember Campos and Perez are underway.
All right, thank you, as noted. Mr. Secretary, I'd like to bring items before we start. Items 60A and the supplemental agenda, as a module. Second.
Mayor, on your, on the supplemental, your item currently ranked only?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Mayor, I'll second your motion.
Motion made, second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 60A, request by Mayor Dr. Victor Trevino. Discussion with possible action and addressing the short-term and long-term plan for alternative water sources and practices that the city can implement that can expand our availability of water from the Rio Grande River and any matters related thereto. Now, the reason I brought this up is that I had a chance to go over the last three Water Master Plans. And we all know that we're seeing an incredible commercial growth. But we need to address the elephant in the room. Our future water source. Before we get into that specific area, I wanted to share some of the facts to the public because it's important that we accept the reality that we're currently dealing with, with finite resource. And we need to change our behavior. The average American family uses 320 gallons of water per day and 30% of which is devoted to outdoor uses. In Laredo, private households account for 65% of Laredo's water use, which is 671 million gallons per month. However, more than 50% of that goes into lawns and gardens. However, more than 50% of that goes to lawns and gardens, we have to repeat it. Now, this is 20% more than the national average. And this would be okay if we had a surplus of water, but we don't. So some of the short-term solutions are as follows. We had some discussions with Representative Henry Quayle's office last week with the possibility of dredging the Rio Grande like they did for the residents of Zapata with Falcon Lake to improve their water supply. This would still maintain the existing waterways by removing the accumulated debris, restore the river's original depth and condition. And most important, remove dead vegetation, invasive species, pollutants, and trash that has gathered in these areas that is accumulating sewage. The other item would be to see if we could incentivize new commercial developments and create programs to install purple piping that could carry non-potable water for the development irrigation needs. Now, I know some discussions have been held in regards to the purple pipes, but these are some of the things that need to be addressed. And this is what my item entails. The other items are the supplemental.
Mayor, point of order.
Yes, go ahead.
Are we going to discuss your item and vote on it, or the one you just?
Yes, let's go ahead and discuss it. Go ahead.
So I'm incredibly grateful that, Mrs. Salma? I'm incredibly grateful that you've brought this up. I think it's incredibly important that we're aware of our water source and the fragility of our dependence on it. The whole point of the secondary water source initiative is to find another water source, not to substitute for the Rio Grande, but to complement the water that we draw from it. The prediction is in about 17 years, and it was projected on conservative growth, that we would need a secondary water source because our demands from the river would exceed our need. Our demands from the river would not meet the needs of Laredo. So it's not that we're looking to replace the Rio Grande, but we do need to find a complement to it. And so the dredging of the river now helps maintain more quantity because it improves evaporation rates to our benefit. It's a little bit complicated because we're taking care of a river and the eco-health system, and we watch a lot of that water just run downstream. But when we, we need to realize that preserving the life of the river, the ecosystem, is incredibly important to maintain the source that we have. So efforts like this, the purple pipe usage, the dredging of the river, I will even add the binational river conservation project and the need to address invasive species along the banks. All of that is sort of an all-hands-on-deck so that we can find additional water sources to meet our needs for our growing city. So I appreciate the attention, Mayor, that you're bringing to this issue.
Thank you. Any action or other discussion?
Mayor, may, I'm sorry, one point. I'll just extend a little bit on the purple pipe program, and I know our utilities director, oh, thank you, will probably be able to explain those efforts a little bit more. It's a technical term that perhaps we understand, but I'm not sure the public does. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. For the record, Arturo Garcia, Utilities Director for City of Laredo. Regarding the purple pipe, what that is, purple pipe is used for our reclaimed water, our effluent reuse, the water that we discharge from our wastewater plant. And that volume of water is a way that we can use towards irrigation and other uses. And that's something that can replace the potable water that's available so that it improves the volume of water that we have potable use. So it's something that we are working towards, identifying also to support the creeks, the local creeks, and improve those habitat areas and, you know, create a good environment for our resource. And it's one that prolongs the use of our water from the Rio Grande. And then additionally, the groundwater, decel. All those avenues are available to us. And it's something that we need to begin to grow towards and develop as we grow and continue to grow. And it's something that will preserve our future.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So I guess I'd like to make a motion to have the city manager through staff come up with a short and long-term, a short and long-term plan for the alternative water sources and the practice the city can implement to address the item that you've brought forth so that we can approve those and put them into action if we don't have anything already in place so that we can move your proposal forward, would be my motion.
Second, that motion.
I have a question. Really quick question. Would this only apply to residents that hold a second water meter?
Well, it would apply more for the institutional use, the large-volume users. And we could have a rate structure to set irrigation use differently from the domestic potable use. So there's different avenues that we can investigate, and that's something that I'll present to you in upcoming workshops, the different opportunities we have to preserve that resource. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you, yes, would you accept an amendment to also include rebates for things such as, rebates to incentivize water conservation, like zero escaping and those with drip irrigation systems?
Absolutely, as amended.
Motion?
And would you accept the second?
Motion accepted, second.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
May we have the motion read? Just to remind us.
Can you read the motion again?
Yes, it's a motion to have the city manager and staff to come up with a plan to implement the items that were spoken on, in the item, and to also include a rebate program for zero scape. Any other ideas that Mr. Garcia comes up with at the end of the day?
Thank you. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will go with the second requested item, supplemental agenda. Appointments to commissions, boards, and committees. Appointment by Mayor Dr. Victor Trevino.
The point of order, I think it was just your item.
A1.
A1, on the supplemental at this time.
Next page.
Oh, yes, I apologize. A1, requested by Mayor Dr. Victor Trevino. Recognition and proclamation for the fellow Laredon Jovita Hidal, a Mexican-American activist and a journalist being memorial on a commemorative quarter. Jovita Hidal based her activism on education, women's rights, and civil rights by Mexican-Americans. Co-sponsored by Councilmember Melissa Cigarroa, Councilmember Alyssa Cigarroa, and Councilmember Dr. Tyler King. Can we have her step forward? Is she here?
Oh, no, no, this is, this is another recognition. Is there a proclamation, or what are we doing here? It's over there, yeah. This is the other recognition. No, not that one. I think it's the long one. The long one, bottom.
And Mayor, Ms. Margarita Raisa could also speak a little bit about Jovita Hidal, if you'd like her to.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Margarita Raisa, Executive Director of the Webb County Heritage Foundation, and we're very proud to be part of this recognition of Jovita Hidal, our own hometown hero, a name that everybody in Laredo should know and be so proud of. She's a role model for all citizens, all citizens of both sides of the river. She was a fierce journalist, civil rights advocate, suffragette, co-founder of the White Cross. Went into action in the Mexican Civil War, taking shots, going through bullets to rescue soldiers from the Mexican Civil War to tend to them and bring them back to health. So thank you so much for this recognition of Jovita. As you know, the U.S. Mint has issued a special commemorative quarter with her image on it. This is a huge special honor for all people, especially Laredon's. And I think we should all be very proud to celebrate this wonderful character.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll read the proclamation. Office of the Mayor, City of Laredo, Texas, proclamation. Jovita Hidal Day in Laredo, Texas. Juarez, Jovita Hidal was born in Laredo, Texas on September 17th, 1885, and devoted her life to being an educator, journalist, political activist, and suffragette. And Juarez, in 1911, Jovita Hidal founded La Liga Feminil Mexicanista, the League of Mexican Women, considered the first feminist organization and advocate for education of Mexican-American children. And Juarez, Jovita Hidal helped organize El Primer Congreso Mexicanista, First Mexicanist Congress, a trans-border gathering to discuss binational civil, educational, economic, and cultural issues facing Hispanics on both sides of the border. And Juarez, along with her friend Leonor Vargas de Magnón, Jovita Hidal founded La Cruz Blanca in Laredo, risking their lives to rescue and tend to wounded soldiers fighting the Mexican Revolution. And Juarez, Jovita Hidal personally faced dangerous situations in order to champion the cause of Mexican-American civil rights and free press. And Juarez, Jovita Hidal later moved to San Antonio, Texas. She established a free kindergarten, worked as an interpreter for Spanish-speaking patients in a county hospital, and was an editor of El Aldo Cristiano. And Juarez, the U.S. Mint, as part of its American Women's Quarters Program, has issued a special quarter honoring Laredo's own hometown hero. Juarez, it is only fitting that Laredo, Texas, as well as the entire nation, should recognize and honor the sterling example of cephalic devotion to trans-border civil rights, equitable education, free journalism, and women's rights. Now therefore, I, Dr. Victor D. Trevino, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Laredo, County of Webb, State of Texas, do hereby proclaim September the 18th, 2023 as Jovita Hidal Day in Laredo, Texas.
Mr. Mayor, I think it'd be fitting that Margarita Raisa receive this so they can have it on display at the Heritage Museum. I think it's best if you come around, Margarita. But let's put the chairs behind us.
All right.
Right on citizens' comments, Mayor. On citizens' comments.
All right, let's proceed with citizens' comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move recognitions one and two up prior to citizens' comments.
Second, motion.
Mayor, would you accept an amendment to pull my recognitions from below? I have two recognitions for Petzolife. For Petzolife and the Illinois National Guard. And also, it's escaping me.
Okay, so I'll accept the amendment to include Councilmember Melissa Cigarroa's request for her recognition items. And if I can get to the rest of the agenda here. I'll help her.
We also have another recognition in the communication section.
All right, so Mayor, my motion is to move up the two recognitions under the recognition, which is Roman numeral number five, the Assistant Director of the Health Department and the Laredo Area Community Foundation, to also include the communications, which management requested, followed by the recognition that Councilmember Melissa Cigarroa requested for Laredo Petzolife. And the Illinois National Guard. And then, that is it, right into Dr. Mommy.
I'll second that motion. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Roman numeral five.
Mayor, this is a recognition of recognizing the City of Laredo Health Assistant Director Erica Gutierrez Martinez for being recognized as one of the 40 Under 40 in public health. The Beaumont Foundation, the Beaumont Foundation announces, announced its class in 2023, 30 September 7th, 2023. After reviewing nominations from hundreds of professionals working to benefit state or local public health across the United States, Erica Martinez serves as the only honoree representing Texas. The class was selected by a distinguished panel of public health professionals for their leadership and impact on their community's health.
Thank you. Dr. Chamberlain, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Dr. Richard Chamberlain, for the record. I wanted to provide a little bit of context and perspective of what the DeBeaumont Foundation is. The DeBeaumont Foundation seeks bold solutions to develop healthier communities. The DeBeaumont Foundation advances policy, builds partnerships, and strengthens public health to create communities where people can achieve their best possible health. The DeBeaumont Foundation 40 Under 40 in Public Health is the first list of its kind to recognize and elevate leaders, changing the face of public health in creative and innovative ways. Honorrees are equity-focused, service-oriented leaders who bring passion and an entrepreneurial spirit to their work. On behalf of the entire Laredo Public Health team, we extend our warmest congratulations to Ms. Erica Gutierrez Martinez for this highly prestigious recognition. Erica's inclusion amongst the 40 Under 40 in public health by the DeBeaumont Foundation is a testament to her outstanding dedication, passion, and contributions to our field. Her relentless commitment to advancing public health initiatives and her remarkable achievements have not only made us immensely proud, but also inspired all of us at Laredo Public Health. And now I will introduce Ms. Erica.
Thank you, Dr. Chamberlain, and Erica Gutierrez Martinez from your health department, for the record. I am profoundly thankful for this recognition, and I want to express my gratitude to the mayor, city council, and city management for acknowledging the outstanding dedication and work of Laredo Health. Being part of the 2023 class for the DeBeaumont 40 Under 40 in Public Health is a testament to our collective initiatives, our commitment, and our passion for improving health outcomes in our community. This achievement reminds us that while hard work, determination, and purpose are integral to our roles, it is equally important to take a moment to cherish our victories and strategize for continuous improvement. Let this also demonstrate that growing up in Laredo and aspiring to serve our community, sorry, wholeheartedly, con corazón, is an asset and not a limitation in our qualifications. Being selected as the DeBeaumont Honoree is not about personal gain, but rather a platform to showcase the work of Laredo Public Health. As the only representative from Texas in our 2023 class, I am determined to seize every opportunity over the next two years to shine a spotlight on our efforts at the border. My aim is to inspire current professionals to collaborate and to instill in future professionals, que si se puede. Furthermore, I am dedicated to exploring additional resources that can further enhance our community's well-being. I extend my heartfelt thanks to Dr. Chamberlain for fostering an environment where authenticity is embraced and our contributions are valued. To my colleagues and friends, thank you for being here. Your support has been a driving force. Thank you for entrusting me with your ambitious ideas, for dreaming big alongside me, and for your tireless efforts in turning those dreams into reality. Thank you to my husband, who stands by my side with unwavering support as I continue to aim higher, and to my three-year-old son, who may not fully grasp today's significance, I hope to make you proud.
Thank you. And with this, we'll read the certificate of recognition. The mayor and city council hereby recognizes Erica Gutierrez Martinez, City of Laredo Health Assistant Director, for being recognized as one of the 40 Under 40 in public health. The DeBeaumont Foundation announced its class of 2023 after receiving nominations from hundreds of professionals working to benefit state or local public health across the United States. Erica Martinez serves as the only honoree representing Texas. And with this, congratulations.
Thank you so much, thank you. Yes, please. Can my colleagues join me as well? Oh, sorry, won't bid, I promise. Oh, one for cheese. Okay. Come take a picture, Papa.
Now, can we let her husband in there?
Sure.
And then we'll fix ourselves, you know?
That's a big deal, guys, sorry. Say cheese, Papa. Yes. Cheese, cheese, cheese. It's the effort of all of us, this is for all of us. Cheese. Cheese, 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 cheese. Ready? One, two, cheese. Oh, one more. Thank you so much.
and the local Jefferson Award nominations.
All right, go ahead, please.
Good evening. I'm Tina Cerda, President of the Laredo Area Community Foundation. Thank you so much, Mayor Trevino and Councilmembers and Councilwoman Alyssa Cigarroa for, for recognizing us tonight. The Laredo Area Community Foundation is a local nonprofit organization that manages seventeen million dollars in donor funds that are deployed back out into the community. And tonight, we're here very excited because we're ready to announce our, applications are open for the Jefferson Awards. I'm pleased and honored to be here tonight with Chando Carranco, who I think needs no introduction, he's hiding, Keith Franklin, Bill Green, and this year's nominee, oh, and I'm sorry, and, and Cindy Viafranca, who is our office manager, and this year's nominee, who is headed to New York City on October the third for the national recognition. This award program is done in collaboration with the Laredo Morning Times. Thank you so much, Mr. Green, for making it possible. Very quick kind of overview, but it highlights, it recognizes public leadership and the spirit of volunteerism, which at the end of the day, that's what you guys do. You're volunteers, you're taking of your own time, but we want to recognize everybody in the community that gives of their time, and we invite all of the local nonprofits. So Councilwoman Cigarroa, I know you mentioned you have a nonprofit that you're, you're going to be recognizing tonight. We want everybody to nominate a Volunteer of the Year so that that person then can be considered for the national, for the, I'm sorry, for the Laredo Volunteer, and ultimately then represents the city of Laredo as Mr. Arshiniega will in New York City or Washington, DC. This is a really high honor. This award was established by the late Jacqueline Kennedy Onassis, and among the winners have been Oprah Winfrey, Cyrus Vance, and our own Laredoans at the national level, our own Laredoans, Manuel Santos, who won in 2015, and Oscar Medina the fourth, who won in 2012. We have an incredible spirit in our community, and that's what the LACF is about, recognizing and supporting all of our members of Laredo that are interested and dedicated to making our city a better and happier place. Any comments, guys?
I think you covered it.
So thank you so much. It's open to any member or volunteer, volunteer or employee of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, sponsored by the Laredo Morning Times, with an organization called Multiplying Good. They're out of Washington, DC. The winner gets an all-expense trip to New York or DC to this very swanky gala, so it's really, really very nice. And then on, from the LACF, the winning organizations will receive a fifteen-hundred-dollar gift or award. Applications are due October sixth, and the presentation of the award will be October eighteenth, so it's a tight timeframe, but we ask that you please reach out to your nonprofit organizations, or if you're in charge of a nonprofit organization, that you look at your membership volunteer list and nominate somebody. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I, I just want to add one thing, Honorable Mayor and distinguished councilmembers. You know, tonight, what a wonderful evening to nominate and, and recognize two women from Laredo, one from the eighteen hundreds and one currently, and, and all the accomplishments they've made from our little town, you know, on the border, and, and not only that, we had Oprah Winfrey, and then we have Mr. Sanchez.
Santos.
I mean, forgive me, Mr. Santos, who worked at, at Bethany House. He was an employee, comes from no wealth, no money, woke up at five in the morning to start giving of his time, his valuable time, to all those who need it. And then after work, he'd do the same thing, and you say you have a Laredo, and there are very few cities in our country who can boast about getting this award. And Mr. Santos is right there with Oprah and everybody else. We really should be Laredo prof. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chendo. I gave everybody one of our annual reports. I think Councilwoman Perez and Councilwoman Rodriguez, did, did we get one for you? Oh, great. If you have any questions, if the LACF can help in any way, please don't hesitate to, to reach out to us. Many of our donors are eager to find those worthwhile projects that speak to them and make a permanent long-term, or a permanent contribution to the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for, for being here tonight with us, and I just want to congratulate you on all the wonderful work and the support that you give to our, our community. I believe we have a certificate also for, for all of you.
With that being said, certificate of recognition to be read. Mayor and City Council hereby recognizes Laredo Area Community Foundation in recognition of their philanthropic support of the community of Laredo and its generous donors, as well as all the support of many nonprofit organizations. Congratulations.
Bill, Bill, Mr. Green, this way.
Come on, Bill.
Head of Chendo?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. You're the, you're the, you're the reason for the season.
That's right, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor.
Y'all wanna move this way?
Come on, Bill. Come on, come on.
Pretty soon I'll be mayor. Keep moving it, right?
Now, keep turning red, Bill. Look how red he is.
One, two, three.
You want your senator to guarantee the picture makes it on the paper?
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, we'll come back to ask you for money, like, like everyone else.
Councilmember Cigarroa. Alyssa. Alyssa. Glasses and the pen? No? Oh. Tina, your glasses. I thought they were yours. We move now to Councilmember Melissa Cigarroa.
I believe the next one was recognizing our, our IT.
Oh, yes. Communications and then Councilmember Cigarroa.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, we'd like to recognize Joe Rivera as the Information Services and Telecommunications Director for the City of Laredo. Joe Rivera comes to the city of Laredo with over twenty years of IT experience in the public and private sector before joining us. He served as the IT Director of Laredo Medical Center. His goals here in, in our city are to ensure the security of our system and to modern, modernize our applications and network infrastructure. Joe holds a bachelor's degree in business administration with a concentration on computer information systems. We just want to welcome Joe to the family.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Rivera.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. As City Manager Lundin mentioned, I've got over twenty years' experience in IT. I'm very excited about this opportunity to come and join a great team that we have here. Just to bring my experiences and skills to the team is, is, like I said, is exciting, and everyone's been very welcoming, so thank you for that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cigarroa.
Thank you.
Alyssa.
No, Melissa.
I'd like to call out Pets Alive Laredo and the Illinois National Guard to recognize them for their months of service in providing vaccine clinics, free vaccine clinics for our residents. These vaccines are vital to protect health, not only of the animals, but also then of the populations of people in which they live. So it is incredible that Pets Alive Laredo, a local nonprofit, was able to acquire a Petco grant to provide vaccines, I'm gonna mess this up, Bordatella or DAP? DAP. Okay, so it's one of the vaccines dogs need, and another one is the Bordatella. So we leveraged the ability of Pets Alive Laredo to acquire the DAP vaccine, and then the City of Laredo provided the Bordatella vaccines. But the missing ingredient in that is you need someone to actually put the vaccines in the animal. We were so fortunate that the Illinois National Guard, they're here on a year of service to the City of Laredo, was able to fill in that gap, and also Laredo Animal Care Services. I, I want to make sure that we recognize our own Vet Techs. So it is incredible, this spirit of cooperation, to use the resources that we have to provide a really needed service in our community. I understand, and I'll ask Sergeant Michael Holmes to describe a little bit the program and how he sold it to his fellow members. The Illinois National Guard will be returning soon, and we didn't want to let the opportunity be missed to recognize their service to our community. Sergeant Holmes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The, the Councilwoman was not kind enough to tell me there was gonna be a speech, so I'm just gonna wing it. First off, it is the Illinois National Guard, we obviously had, ah, doing great. This is Captain Holland from the Kentucky National Guard. Several of his soldiers, as well as the New Hampshire National Guard soldiers, were a part of this as well, and I wanted to make sure that got mentioned because I think it really speaks to what we do, because he's from Kentucky, I'm from Illinois, New Hampshire, Texas. We're all neighbors. We're all citizens, we're all helping each other out. As far as how we got started with Mary and Maesa here, it was actually pure luck. I stopped at Raising Cane's Chicken, I can't even remember the name of it, we don't have that in Illinois, so, and they had a flyer up there for a fundraiser they were doing. So I called her and asked if they needed any help with anything, and she, we got to talking and stuff, and I have a history, when I was younger, of breeding dogs, so we used to give our own vaccines. And she was talking about needing help with that, so we worked it out, and eventually I came, we taught some of the other soldiers to do it. I think we've given a total of, what, twelve hundred-ish?
Approximately.
Around twelve hundred vaccines so far, completely free of charge, no questions asked, fill out the waiver. So that's twelve hundred families that we've helped, twelve hundred pets that we've made safer. I am one hundred percent a dog person, animal lover through and through. This opportunity with PAL has also made this year easier for me, being away from home, and honestly, the people of Laredo have made this year easier as well, because I didn't know what to expect when I came here, and the hospitality and just the amount of caring that I've seen from the people of this town, it's truly an honor, it's thank you. But I really do want to recognize Mary and Maesa here, who are honestly the architects of all this. We are just the labor force.
So Pets Alive Laredo is represented tonight by Mary Bender and Maesa Becerra, workhorses for the community, but I'll let you speak.
Well, thank you very much. This is a great honor. As animal advocates, we are always looking at ways that we can improve our community providing services for our pets. If we found this grant through Petco, and actually it was APA that connected us with Petco, we got the grant, we started, we got the grant in October, and we initiated the program in January. We started our first vaccine clinic with Vanessa Perez, District Seven. We had them in January, and we moved on to District One, and we've been trying to incorporate each district. Our goal was to have two clinics at each district. And although Albert Torres and Ruben Gutierrez have not responded, and they've not scheduled their clinics, it is still open, and the offer is still open to them.
Well, we know that District Six and District Eight clinics are up and coming, so we'll be looking forward to those also.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much. We hope that we can continue with this as long as Petco continues the grant. We expect to continue this next year, and hopefully for many years to come.
I, I can't thank you enough for the work that you do. I know it's all volunteer work. Mary Bender was there also providing dog food for the residents who came to Larga Vista during the District Three clinic. She unwisely was hauling all of those dog food bags on her own, but we were able to give away all of them. So I appreciate your work and service to the community so much. I know the City of Laredo does. It is an incredible need that we have, and it's a small token of our appreciation to recognize you for this work. And I will just say to the members of the National Guard, I believe every certificate says Illinois National Guard, so we'll fix that.
My honorary, it's mine.
I'm, I'm sure everyone will appreciate that. There are about fifty-five members of the, the various National Guards that participated in this in giving all these vaccines. So again, thank you. Thank you to both organizations. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I do want to add that these vaccine clinics would have not been possible without the help of the National Guard volunteers, because they came out in numbers, and, and some cases even administered vaccines. I mean, they did everything. We would have not been able to handle it by ourselves.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yes, I also want to, want to thank this collaboration, and also, you know, you all had a, the National Guard, and you all had a great platoon there. I know back in my district, we got probably the first time signed up within the first thirty minutes. That just shows you how much the community cares for our pets out there. So once again, I really want to, want to thank you.
All right. Mayor, may I make a comment real quick?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Although I have not gotten back to you all, I do want to put it out there that I have assisted in paying for some of the clinics, even from my own pocket, from some councilors that have asked for assistance. So it's just been the logistics, but we will get it done.
All right, thank you.
I, I just have one word real quick. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that all of our soldiers combined, my group from Kentucky, his group from Illinois, and then the group from New Hampshire, combined all the work that they've done here in Laredo, they've done over about fifty-five hundred volunteer hours for different organizations here within, within the city. So we really appreciate your hospitality and everything that you all have done for us down here.
That's tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, go ahead.
I just have one word real quick. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that all of our soldiers combined, my group from Kentucky, his group from Illinois, and then the group from New Hampshire, combined all the work that they've done here in Laredo, they've done over about fifty-five hundred volunteer hours for different organizations here within the city. So we really appreciate your hospitality and everything that you all have done for us down here.
That's tremendous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
With Councilwoman Torres, I want to thank you in front of Pets Alive and the National Guard. Councilwoman Torres was one of the ones that helped me when it came to District Two. So we did, with his help, we did vaccinate over a hundred and fifty pets. So Councilwoman Torres, thank you so much for that.
Thank you. And before you leave, I'd like to read certificates.
All of them.
Every single one of them.
Certificates of recognition. Mayor and City Council hereby recognizes. In recognition of your volunteer work for the past year during your service deployment in staffing citywide dog vaccine clinics, as a city, we express our gratitude for your dedication and support in providing this valuable resource for Laredo pet owners. Thank you very much.
They did. A lot of them.
City Secretary's office.
You appreciate it.
Is that okay where I stand?
Here? Wherever you'd like. You can stand right here. Now, let's get, we'll do good.
...of the interplay between local, regional, and global dynamics at the U.S.-Mexico border expands our understanding of the ways globalization is generating transformation. And I just want to say, Dr. Momon, this is so important to release this and have our voices be heard. We know farther from our borders that there is such a false narrative out there of what our lived reality is, and the fact that you can showcase what really happens, our beautiful culture, the relationships that people have, and how much we value family and quality of life, and appreciation for our culture and identity. I think it's so important, especially in today's world. So thank you so much for this book.
Thank you. And I'm very grateful to people of Laredo, because this is primary research. Actually, Alberto was one of my interviewees. So I've talked to people from Laredo, and usually when we hear about border, border is defined from outside. So here in the book, my role was to connect all of these different themes, and basically come up with the framework which tells a much larger, broader story of Laredo. So this is actually the story told by the people themselves. So I'm very happy to be part of the process, and I hope, you know, like what you said, the negative narrative about border, about Laredo, you know, that gets challenged from everywhere, and I hope this becomes a part of that challenge.
Mr. Mayor, may I say a few words?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, it is indeed a pleasure and an honor to have someone like Dr. Momon be part of our community, and to dedicate so much of her time to ensure that our community is put out there, and the focus that she's emphasized through her career at Texas Medical University speaks volumes. And a lot of the directors in this room have been very lucky to be part of taking courses with Dr. Momon through the CPM courses that our City Manager has championed. Also, council members will soon have the opportunity that I've had to engage with her and learn. She's a wealth of knowledge. We're very lucky and fortunate to have someone like Dr. Momon in our community, and we thank you for everything you've done to ensure that Laredo is put out there, and that our border narrative is the real narrative and not what is really put out there by different networks, right? Or for lack of better words. But thank you so much, Dr. Momon. Thank you for all the time and effort you've put into this publication. We appreciate it, and I know, I speak for my colleagues and the mayor, we're very proud of everything you've done and the way you've represented our city.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Dr. Momon, will you join us for a picture?
Oh, sure.
And your family is welcome. Would you join us all?
Now we go back to public comments.
All right. Back to public comments. Justice comments. Patricia Rincon.
Mr. Mayor and council members.
Afternoon.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for your time. Today, I'm here to talk about the Laredo Animal Care Services ending their partnership with Austin Pets Alive due to leadership hostility and cooperation, as stated by Austin Pets Alive. I just wanted to talk about the problems that we have in Laredo that I've seen as a community member. We have overpopulation of dogs and cats, overpopulation of strays, especially large breeds. We have pet dumping in very large amounts. We also have irresponsible owners that let the pets wander without a leash, without supervision, and that's a problem as well. So I, every time I have a problem, I like to come up with solutions, and I just have a couple of things that I think that would help. Laredo Animal Care Services leadership should be proactive in helping solve these problems. Educate the public on the consequences of illegal dumping and pets who are left to wander. Enforce the law to hold irresponsible pet owners accountable and responsible for their pets. Help the community with low-cost surgeries to spay and neuter, and that is very important. A regular vet, just, I don't know if the council is aware, Mr. Mayor is aware, but a regular vet charges anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred dollars for a full-grown husky, because I have one, and I try to do it, and that's what it costs. And not only that, but they also claim they don't have time. They gave me an appointment for March 2024, and that is, I believe, unacceptable. This can all be done by using, and like I said, these are just some examples. I know we have more problems, and I know there's more solutions that can be addressed. But this can be done through the media. I know that a lot of, for example, Laredo PD is very active, they're very proactive in their social media platforms, and I feel like the Laredo Animal Care Services could be a little more proactive in their media outlets as well. LAX needs a director who not only is highly qualified, but also for the position, but also possesses compassion and empathy in order to be a true advocate for these helpless animals. We need someone who understands that this is far greater than a single person. In their statement, Austin Pets Alive states that they tried working with LAX leadership for months, and that they were met with high resistance. They added that efforts were not only ignored, but they were not, they were met, I'm sorry, with increasing hostility and wildly false misinformation, not only by LAX leadership, but also City Council. I don't know how true that is, but that's what they said.
Remember, we have three minutes per person.
Yes, I'm on...
All right.
Austin Pets Alive is a tremendous resource to our community, and we cannot afford to lose this resource. We ask that LAX and City Council reconsider their decision, and that they keep working together with Austin Pets Alive. And one quick, quick final quote that I want to leave you with, by Gandhi, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way their animals are treated." Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Mr. Velasco. Omar. Remember three minutes, please.
Yes, sir. Hello, good afternoon. Mayor, Dr. Trevino, City Council, and City of Laredo. I am Olkomar Velasco.
This is Steve Venegas and Marco Pompa. We are here, we are senior system engineers with TMIU. We received special permission by the school and the engineering department to pursue our senior project regarding the Laredo water system. We are trying to create a systematic simulation approach to the Laredo water system, which includes water supply, water treatment, infrastructure, et cetera. The purpose of this project is to create an unbiased, neutral project to educate and find a solution in a more efficient way for our water. We know that these droughts are not going to stop, are increasing population, so we need to find a way to help this water for our community and our animals. So we here are, we kindly ask you for your support and help in acquiring certain data to help us accomplish an efficient project. We are not asking for money, we are just asking for help and certain data that we need, such as infrastructure, pipelines, how much water is coming in, in and out. Like I said, this is going to be an unbiased, neutral project. Through simulation, what can be done? We can experiment without needing to spend money. Everything can be done online, and this will be part of the city and the, and TMIU, which is going to be a great amenity to the city and the school. It'll look great for everyone, and like I said, it is to find a solution to the water. Water is life, and it is important for Laredo and the preservation of the Rio Grande.
Mr. Mayor, may I be heard?
Yes, one, yes, I'm interested in that, and if you can provide your ideas, your findings or your research, provide them to the city, we're interested in that.
Yes.
All right. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Mr. Mayor, could we direct management to get their information, have someone from their staff, so that we can cooperate with them with their research and provide them with the necessary data that they need to move forward, like the mayor mentioned. Maybe once you're done with your project, sponsor an item so they can come and present that project to us and see what they've got, and also have the utilities department work hand-in-hand with them to give them whatever it is that they need to move with their project forward.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, yes, well, Arturo's in the audience, our director. Please, Arturo, go ahead and make that connection.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to also direct you to opendata dot, well, it's opendatalaredo, and I don't know if management could give them the correct web address, but we do have some of that information you're looking for online. Laredo is trying to be, the City of Laredo is trying to become more transparent. Hopefully, that will also allow you to get started. But of course, Dr., Mr. Garcia will be an excellent resource for you.
Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks so much for your time.
Mary Lugars.
Before I get started, I want you all to know that I took time off of work to come and speak before you, and I see that most of you, some of you all are on your phones. So if I'm not getting paid for being here today, I wish you all would pay attention to what we're going to say to you. All of these people are your boots on the ground in rescues. We've worked with the animal shelter. On June 21st, 2021, some of us, most of us, were at the airport doing the, my dog is my co-pilot. Some pictures started to surface where the dogs and the cats were in distress, were in kennels, full of urine and feces. And this may take longer than three minutes. And the person that was in charge of that facility was Elizondo. Five days later, you have Cristina Hale saying those pictures were not from the shelter. I'm here to tell you, and so are these people, we were there. We were there that night, we were there the following week, trying to clean up all that mess. Karina Elizondo said that she had asked for help from you guys, and most of you were not there, but the other council members, had asked help, and nobody gave her the help. I asked Dr. Line Decker, how come you didn't go and talk? We did, and nobody wanted to help us. On June 25th, the investigation was concluded, and Ms. Elizondo was allowed to go back. On March 16th, I met with Lundin and Nebbs, along with Michelle Deves, and also with Antonia Tagarza, and we told them about everything that was going on. Some of the issues were that the data was being manipulated. They didn't want to give us the records. I had to send a request to Austin so that I could get the records. And when I looked at those records, we're missing twenty to thirty dogs every month, and those records are being deleted. APA couldn't have done it because they don't have access, just like I can't go and delete something off your computer, I don't know your password. So now we have several meetings where I talked to Nebbs, and I talked to Lundin, and they said, oh, we'll fix it in three months. It's almost six months, and nothing has been fixed. I was told by Mr. Lundin, we can't fix stupid. My response to that was, let me tell you about a situation where councilmember Melissa Sigarroa's dog got out. Angie Anceda from Paws picked up that dog and took it to the shelter. The lady, one of your neighbors, took a picture and contacted you. The dog went to the shelter. The shelter had no way of knowing who that dog belonged to, even though that dog was chipped. That's not stupid on her part, that's stupid on the people that are running that shelter. And if we want to hide our heads in the sand and pretend like Elizondo is the best thing that happened to Laredo, I'm here to tell you, she's not. If you don't know who Austin Pets Alive is, look at everything they've done. And they cannot work with Elizondo. So we want to recycle employees and politicians, and you want to keep doing that? Then recycle her to a department where the animals are not going to be her victims, because that's what they are, her victims. And I spoke to you, Mr. Gonzalez, I sent emails to everybody, numerous emails telling you and sending you pictures of what was going on in there, and you all chose to ignore it. And that's why we're here. That's why APA is trying to move away, because we chose to ignore it. And if we continue, you just wait. Once APA leaves, your euthanasia is going to go up. And we shouldn't be allowing Elizondo to... And we shouldn't be allowing Elizondo to manipulate numbers for her to come up to city council and say, oh, I'm at 80% live release. You're not. And you can get the same records I got and you want to ask her what happens to those 20 and 30 dogs that are missing from month to month to month? We even had a dog that ended up across the border. She is in charge of that department, she is. And I don't care what Juanito and Manganito's doing, she's in charge and she can't pretend like she doesn't know what's going on. We had a cat and puppies that were left to die in their cages overnight because it was a long weekend. And that's the person that you all allowed to be in charge of the animal shelter. You just heard that lady. You have all these people that are so, you know, they just love animals, willing to do whatever it takes to save them. But if your number one person in the shelter doesn't have that same empathy as us, we don't need her. Send her over to, I don't know, recycling or I don't care where you send her, don't fire her.
Time.
But put her in a place where she's not, where we can allow her to make our animals her victims.
All right, thank you very much.
This is going to take a minute, timing.
What name? Are you signed up? Are you signed up?
Yes. Yes, Maissa Oreli.
Let me see, hold on.
I can allow the ones to go on.
Here we go. Okay, go ahead, three minutes, please, and.
A minute.
Please, let's be civil and cordial.
Before I became member of Paus, 2021, I became former members of Paus. I've been volunteer for the city shelter for six years. My job was to get my van to the shelter 7:00 AM, load up with 20 dogs, drive it to San Antonio, San Tom Austin, and come back. So that's, and I, I did from my heart, okay? And this was previous leadership and also with Karina too, okay? But with Karina, she always, we have an open relationship with us and she asked us to make a suggestion how she can improve the shelter. We email her in writing several points, how can we help them? And we always were supporting her. However, this has been six, seven months ago, nothing has been done. One of our suggestions was education to the community, and I think you quote that in today in the newspaper yesterday, because I read about APA. Trained the people, they, they don't know what to do. My dog have 10 puppies and they never keep having, one female can give almost 500 dogs. One cat female can give 400 cats, it's a fact. Anyway, so education to the community, that's the basic. She never even put posters, okay, what can I do if I found this dog? We always told her, we are helping her, it's not easy, they understand, I understand, not perfect. I always support the shelter, but this is too much. Now, one, so we found lots of resistance from her part, okay? And it's always blaming somebody else. Oh, because the kind of worker didn't come today. No, it's on her, okay? So, I am a shelter foster, my house is always, I have three foster right now, and I, when they leave Thursday, I'll go there and pick it up more. I'm always recycled. My husband never know which dogs come in and we're going out, especially babies. There are puppies that born three, four days old, they come to the shelter, that's community problem, not shelter problem. And they call me, I have to bottle feed them every three hours. And many meetings, I come with a puppy, okay? So that's my job and I do from my heart. So, but it's always resistancy. We're here to solve the problem, not complaining. So I feel hurt that APA is leaving. For me, it's going back forwards and that's shame on us, shame on Laredo, I'm embarrassed. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Name, please.
I'm Mary Bender. I am president of Pets Alive Laredo. I am also a citizen, a very concerned citizen, a very passionate animal advocate. I have volunteered at the shelter since 2019, almost every day until August of 2022. I have cleaned the cat village, okay? So you can imagine what that's like. I have scrubbed crates and cleaned and prepped four flights, okay? And I'm also a member of the Animal Advisory Care Committee, or the Animal Care Advisory Committee. And as such, I am very concerned that the city allowed the shelter director to push APA out. How did she do that? By refusing to even come to the table and discuss a compromise. Mr. Neb mentioned, they were, they quoted him in an article, that he's looking for professional help from outside to come help with this overpopulation problem. You have the help, your director pushed them out. Then she brings people, story spinners from out of town, they're not residents, they just come in to cause confusion and sensationalize misinformation. She's going to be gone when this is over. She's just going to cause a lot of confusion, people aren't going to know what to think. That lady's gone, she's self-serving. She's a child's book author. She wants to sell books and she wants to generate donations. She's not here to help. Yet she has sent all of you emails complaining about council members that don't like APA. The shelter, the shelter director is not the right person for the shelter. She has shown this repeatedly. No education programs, resists outside help. APA invested $500,000 bringing in employees. Yet, she stands before a city council meeting that I viewed the recording and she says, no, APA's causing my budget to go up because I had to bring in new people. That's not true. She spins the truth and she is misleading the council. And why she's allowed to do that, I don't know. APA was willing to bring additional resources to help with low-cost spay-neuters. She's, we've offered, the LAX has offered assistance once, two years ago. I know there's money in the budget now. But when is the city council going to open their eyes and see what is truly happening? She is an aspiring politician and that is all that is on her agenda.
All right, thank you very much, it's time. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and councilpeople. My name is Maria Linastrada and I am in favor of keeping Austin Pets Alive. A lot of my fosters, they end up with them, which is wonderful. I really think that you all need to reconsider this organization, which has been very beneficial to the city of Laredo. And if anything, you need to like really go out there, perhaps yourselves, to see firsthand how things are being held, how they get them done at the shelter, all right? Because the way Laredo is going in the direction as far as taking care of our strays is not the right direction. The other thing that I would like to add is that I know we speak very proudly of Laredo, a lot of individuals got awards, but you know, you need to look at the fact that we do have a lot of strays where we need a lot of spay and neutering. And I think this organization out from Austin would certainly help us out in this endeavor. So please reconsider and please, like I said, I think that if anything, you need to go out there and see firsthand what happens at the shelter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Nancy Rodriguez and I'm here before you representing the many animal advocates and activists. As most of you know, I am the founder of the Facebook group Pet Lovers Paradise. My mission is to bring awareness and education while also encouraging rescue foster efforts and emergency funding on a case-by-case basis. I am here today to urge the change that the city shelter is needing, enough is enough. Laredo has many city ordinances which begin at chapter six. While there are many ordinances, there are also Texas and federal laws that protect animals. While these resolutions are a stepping stone, they offer no real protection because the city of Laredo is not enforcing them. The majority of Laredo residents care about fair treatment of animals and I am proud that we report that, those that need to be reported. But the truth is that we need LPD, including animal control officers, to enforce such laws and ordinances that protect these animals at an all-time basis and not just when they feel like it is okay to do so. I have asked plenty of times to create an educational meeting with prior police chief to go over these laws and ordinances, but was left with deaf ears. And now, as you all know, we have a new chief, so I will try once more. Many officers will tell you that they simply do not know what they are doing and quite frankly, their demeanor says that they are not interested in those calls. Now, we all know, we all, we all are here because of the announcement that APA will be cutting their contract with our city shelter. But even before the nine months that APA was helping our city, our shelter, along with shelter director, has been on the low and her efforts have fallen drastically. Therefore, I, representing the many other animal advocates and activists, I believe it is time that we made a change. And I'm sure you all know what that change is. Considering the APA crisis that was unleashed by none other than our very own shelter director, I amongst others fear that more animals will be euthanized. Considering the many measures, tips, education, and more that was offered, I do not believe anything that the shelter's director has or will say is as a sufficient excuse. I ask the city council to reconsider your decision to appoint shelter director Karina Elizondo and have her reassigned and elect someone who will clean up her mess, while also having dignity, knowledge, and compassion for these animals. For a long time, people, including myself, have seemed to stop fighting for animals because we have become tired of nothing being done. And many times, we aren't aware of the behind the scenes and quite frankly, we know the city lacks transparency. I must say that at times, it's not the shelter staff's fault as there are too many politics involved and too many things being covered up, money being passed around to keep people's mouths shut. Although we know that the city shelter has come a long way, there is still a very long way to go. We need to wake up. I can only hope that one day, things at the shelter will change. So many animals lose their lives every day and there will be more soon after APA leaves. If you don't act now, soon many more innocent animals will be killed.
All right, please wrap it up.
I can finish?
Yeah, go ahead and finish it.
Thank you. How are we as a community staying quiet? How do you council and mayor stay silent while our tax dollars are funding the euthanasia of innocent animals? We need everyone to spay-neuter and while I understand that this is a community issue, we also need our council to be consistent with what you all grant the community. This tactic to give and give just to keep us conformed, then to not be consistent is shameful. August 5th, 2021, I, amongst two other women, stood before you and presented a proposal to start a low-cost spay-neuter program in which the city granted $100,000 annually. However, we have only seen one. What happened to the whole? This would be a directive to management in plan for the preventive to reduce the euthanasia that councilwoman Vanessa Perez stated and claimed she would continue to be working on until the end of her term. We cannot continue this way and we cannot change this without your help. So please do your job respectfully.
Thank you for its comments. Name, please.
Jaime Gurola.
Yes, go ahead.
So, my name's Jaime Gurola, I'm a local exotic animal care specialist and I'm here today to talk about APA leaving. And I'm just going to read off this because I had a whole speech planned with fury and vitriol, but I doubt it'll reach you, so here we go. The truth is, shelter management is pretty much an utter failure. The director holds no experience in biology, zoology, zoonotic disease prevention, veterinary medicine, animal nutrition, nothing. They have been accused of animal cruelty in 2021 and here we are again, again, same story, nothing done. So we've established she's a failure in that regard. The director of LAX is a failure administratively too. In what other job can you lose $600,000 worth of help and still keep your job? If I lost $600, $600,000 worth of help, I'd be dead out of a job. So she's a failure there too, there's, she's lost the transport. APA was helping transport animals out. What's going to happen to that? The dog is my co-pilot, APA brought that in too. So she tried to take it, take credit for that. Shelter management is a failure and the animal control side too, you go to the north side of town, the south side, the rich side, the poor side, everybody's going to tell you. You call the dog pound, nunca viene la perrera. Same thing my mom always says, dog pound never shows up, so there's another failure. So we've established that my money, my tax money, your money, their money, is going to fund a failure, a failure of a shelter. On top of all that, you mean to tell me APA's out and the youth rate is about to skyrocket? Animals are about to die at a catastrophic rate again? And you all do nothing? Do something, please, anything, even a platitude would be nice. That's all I got.
Thank you for the comments. Les Angiano.
Hello, everyone. I want to start by saying that I'm not originally from Laredo, I'm from Zapata. And over there, it was kind of known that there's not enough resources to help the animals. So when I came here, I quickly joined Pets Alive and I volunteer even at the other shelter, the nonprofit shelter. And it's very, I don't want to say soul-crushing, but it is very dishonoring to see how horrible people are there. When I step foot in that place, I instantly get sad and I adopted a dog from there. When I showed up, they told me, oh, sorry, I know you had an appointment, but we called you and we canceled it. So I pulled up my phone records and nobody called me. So finally, somebody else called me back after I left and they said, you know what? It's because we are closed today. And I said, well, first you're telling me that you canceled on me and now you're telling me that you're closed. So if you're going to lie, pick one. I need to know what is happening. I went in, I got my dog, I left. In the times I've gone back, people are adopting their dogs, they're dropping off their dogs, they almost get in fights in the lobby. I mean, there's no guidance. When you adopt a dog, you need at least maybe three months before they fully decompress and nobody tells you that. So they're returning dogs the next day, the next week, the next month. And then those dogs are deemed unhomable. And then what happens to them? They die. There's no other solution for them because there's no resources. Now you have Austin Pets Alive who comes in and wants to help you, they promote you on their social media, they have the people from Buffalo who do these transports, they drive all night, non-stop to get their dogs to New York. And everyone in the comments on those videos says how atrocious it is that Laredo is one of the top kill shelters in the, in the states. I mean, we're not a third world country for us to be even doing that. And it's very, very sad to look at all of you and know that you go home to your very nice houses with your kids who probably have pets or want pets and you don't care. And to be honest, I think, I want to just close with this, it speaks volumes that after getting that certificate and that award, that two of your councilmembers felt the need to say that they provided money for us and to say that they helped each other to do their own vaccine clinics. That in itself speaks volumes. Thank you.
Thank you. Luz Martinez. Not here. All right, next item?
There, there were some right there that came through the internet of folks that were gonna...
Oh, yes. We have some comments that you're gonna put out.
I think those are also citizen comments where, I don't know if they're here though.
Yes, the ones the mayor has.
Good evening, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you. I'm seeing that you're moving agenda items that have citizen comments to the front of the line, and that's one of the things that I wanted to request, so thank you for doing that, because I've seen some other city council meetings where people are just waiting three, four hours to express their opinion. So hopefully, this is a pattern that we keep for city council, to encourage more people to participate, more citizens to comment on issues that affect them. Something else, you know, with me talking about lack of resources for several of the departments, and here are two things that I would like to find out the status on. One of them is an update on the Tomas Sanchez statue that we paid for, I think, I believe. And, you know, there's two options we can go about it. Get the extremely overpriced statue delivered to Laredo, and, you know, get the artist to give us a delivery date. Or a better option, give us back the almost a million dollars that we spent on a statue that hasn't been delivered, and I'm sure a bunch of directors here, department directors, will be happy to use that money. You know, we're sure staff on a lot of those issues. Another source, another million, 1.1 million could be found on the scam, you know, where a citizen, I mean, a city employee paid 1.1 million dollars in 2019. It was come to light last year. I think about $400,000 were recovered. If we could get an update, maybe for next city council, on, you know, what's the status on that situation as well. I'm here to speak on a different item as well, on Shiloh, and I might not have the time by the time the issue comes around, so I'll just leave my comments right now. I would like to ask City Council to declare Shiloh Park a green space, so no future construction can be done, and the possibility of losing more land is zero. Also try to acquire more land near the park. No city buildings in any available city land near the park. Any available real estate should be used to expand the most popular park in Laredo. Requirements for any Shiloh enhancements should be, for any company that's gonna do it, they should have a minimum of five bike trails and over five years of experience if we're gonna hire a company to use that grant that, you know, we just acquired. Local cyclists have been riding on a short, unsafe, and basic trail for over two years, waiting for the improvements promised to us by our previous councilmen. We need to start improving the park tomorrow. Whatever is needed, whatever step one is, please begin tomorrow. You don't have to be a cyclist to benefit from Shiloh improvements. If our goal, if our goal is to deliver top Shiloh bike trail is met, we will have a few cycling events that will benefit our local economy by bringing in sports tourism and promoting a healthy lifestyle in the unhealthiest city in the USA. I have been working on Shiloh Bike Trail with the two previous administrations, with the previous councilmen, and, you know, I asked Tyler King, Dr. King, if he can keep me on board, you know, with any meeting in relation to Shiloh bike trails. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Castillo. Elisa Mar Soto. Agenda item.
But she already spoke to you?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's it. These are... Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve appointments on the...
Go ahead, who do you have there?
I also have other comments that were written comments that we're turning today on the LAX issue. My name is Noraida Negrón, Public Information Manager, for the record.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, how many comments do we have?
So, I have 11, and then another 11 are the exact same comments, so I will only read it once, because it's the exact same, they copy-pasted it. So it'll be about 12 of them.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce the written comments to be part of the minutes for purposes of time and to be given to the City Secretary to be recorded as such.
Motion?
Second.
Comments?
Can I ask a point of order? Is this to not read them or to have them read?
To make them part of the record through the minutes, through the City Secretary, as we've done in the past with other written comments.
Yes, but will they be read?
Like I said, the same way it's been done for other written comments, to be put as part of the record, as written comments, just as they were submitted. We've done this before, legal and City Secretary?
Yes, unless council wants them read, otherwise, we can have it in a minute.
I just want to make a comment that several of the comments that we've received have been from high school students, and so while I understand that it is a little long, I do want to respect the fact that we have our youth contributing to city government, and they want their voices to be heard, and I think the expectation of them was to have these comments actually voiced out at the meeting. I understand your concern for time, and I don't disagree, but we had youth write in, and I think it would be a shame not to hear them.
You already read the comments?
Point of order, please.
You read the comments already?
Point of order.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You already read the comments, councilmember, that you know what they are? Because I don't, I haven't received them.
Yes, you did, I'm sorry.
I did not receive. Did we receive anything from anyone? Mr. City, Mr. Acting Manager?
Honorable Mayor, Member of the Council, the only one that has any copies of any of the written comments is our Public Information Manager, Ms. Negrón.
All right, Mr. Mayor, then what I'll do is I'll respect Councilmember Melissa Cigarrova's request, I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll request that each comment then be within the three minutes, just like everyone else who made time to be here in person, to speak in person.
All right, noted.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay. The first, sorry, the first comment is from Melissa Strang. It reads, "Please do not stop all transports between Laredo and rescues. These animals' lives matter, and without transports, they will surely all die. Please, please, find it in your hearts to do the right thing and give all animals a fighting chance they have by continuing transports. We have rescued and fostered from Laredo, and they are the sweetest, kindest dogs who found the loving homes they deserve. Please let this continue happening." The next one is from Sarah Malaney. "What is happening in Laredo, Texas is a complete failure to the four-legged friends that have absolutely no voice. I foster for a rescue in New York State and cannot bring myself to think about what is to come for the poor, voiceless souls trapped at LAX. To be surrendered or picked up as a stray in Laredo, Texas will now be an absolute and certain death sentence. The rescue I am with already calls LAX hell on earth. When the dogs are posted in our private album to choose from, we all brace ourselves because we know that if we select a dog on Tuesday evening, come Wednesday morning, odds are the dogs will already be done, be gone, rather. With the APA leaving and rescues no longer being able to pull dogs, this organization is going to sink, and many, many dogs will die needlessly. It starts from the top. Please terminate and replace Karina Lisondo and protect the homeless animals of Laredo. My favorite fosters are from this shelter. My very first one ever, George, came to me infested with hookworms and now lives every day of his life as a treasured family member surrounded by love. The euthanasia numbers are already staggering at LAX. If changes are in made quickly, this will be a mass murder, and one that's totally preventable. Please help us help more dogs." The next one is from Julie Boyak. "Please reconsider and save the dogs." The next one is from Alicia Carroll. "I am commenting as a foster from a rescue that transports Laredo dogs up to New York State. Every single dog that we have transported from Laredo has found a home, every dog. These dogs deserve a chance at life. Two hundred dogs still within the care of LAX will be euthanized after September 29th. It is my hope that you, the City Council, not only ensure that every dog makes it out of LAX alive and homed by foster transported out of state or adopted before September 29th. Additionally, having a trap-neuter release program will not only mitigate the number of stray dogs in the area, it will also save the lives of these dogs. All cities don't have the issues with strays that yours does. There is a reason why. There is plenty of solution to this problem. We that don't end with dogs being euthanized, please consider all options." The next one is from Laura Garcia. "Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Mr. Neb. I'm here to speak for those who cannot, the animals, cats, and dogs of our community, the cats and dogs that will be euthanized once they enter the city shelter due to the lack of knowledge and current administration has improperly running a facility such as this. In the short eight months that APA has been assisting the shelter, they have spayed a thousand animals, transported hundreds of others, and helped in providing training to the staff. Observations and recommendations were made, and APA was met with resistance. I understand change is difficult, but change in procedures and administration is what is needed for the animals of our community to have a chance at survival once they enter that building. Ask yourselves, what has this administration done to help the animals of our community? How many have been euthanized due to the lack of space? Why is this director so protected? Shouldn't the animals be the ones protected? I do not know, it is too late, if it's too late, but maybe APA would reconsider leaving Laredo if they knew they had the support of the mayor and council. Thank you for your time. Special thanks to Councilmember Dr. King, who has taken the time to visit the shelter to see for himself the state of the shelter and the animals in there." The next one is from Reina Villarreal. "The Laredo Animal Shelter Director needs to be reassigned. There is where the root of the problem begins. I don't want to see the number of euthanized dogs and cats go up. The shelter should look for resources and work with other organizations that are tying or trying to help each shelter pet have a second chance to live a better life, not a shelter that is more concerned of having a low capacity and kills animals. APA Transport Program helped over 1,700 this year alone, and now because of no cooperation from Shelter Director, that is going to end. It is very sad knowing that less animals are going to have the opportunity to have a second chance to live. We want a shelter where the person running it is compassionate and truly cares for the animals of Laredo that are in the shelter. We want a life-saving shelter not only that focuses on running a low-capacity shelter, even when that means euthanizing a healthy animal. We are the voice of the voiceless, and we demand a change." The next one is from Rebecca Lam. "Please do not allow Laredo Animal County Services to stop life-saving rescue transport. I foster for a New York State rescue. I have fostered two dogs from Laredo. I actually fostered failed the first one, and he's absolutely the best dog ever. My most recent foster was from Laredo, the sweetest dog. Laredo dogs deserve a chance. You have multiple rescues in the country willing to save these Laredo dogs. Why would anyone want to stop that from happening?" The next one is from Kimberly Foster. "It is the duty of our city and its citizens to act responsibly and ethically for the animals in our shelter. Once they're in our charge, we have a duty to protect them as we would any other helpless being. It is not only senseless but cruel to put healthy animals to death when resources are squandered across town for projects that serve, rather, only for financial gain. For many dogs or cats or family members, however, these babies are not given a fair chance at the life they deserve. Please choose compassion and life for these animals, as we are their only hope." The next one is from Crystal Padilla. "Something needs to be done about our animals. These are many dogs and cats suffering in the streets. They're hungry and sick. We need to take action and ensure that we use the proper funds to help those that have no voice. We need to have more access to low-cost spay-and-neuter programs." The next one is from Brittany Di Stefano. "As a volunteer for rescue in New York State, I can attest that the work endlessly to help transport dogs from the Laredo shelter to save them from unnecessary euthanasia. The rescue funds, the transport pays for the dogs' medical needs. We foster the dogs and help them find homes. I know rescues from New York State would be willing to drive right to the shelter to pick up the dogs if the shelter will continue doing transports. Dogs are living beings, and it is cruel to knowingly continue allowing the shelter to function the way it is, knowing that more than 90% of the dogs that enter the shelter will never come back out alive. We rely on dogs to rescue people from fires, guide the blind, assist our veterans who suffer from PTSD for fighting for our freedom, and yet there is no system in place to protect their lives. I personally have helped rescue multiple dogs from the Laredo shelter, and they have been the sweetest, most deserving of love, not death. Please, I urge you to consider the lives that are at stake. Euthanasia has clearly not been shown to control the stray population, only take away innocent lives." The next one is from Cindy Alvarado. "I think that the city council members should have to be present any and every time. Animals need to be euthanized due to the lack of space, of funds. We need to work together to help out the community." I do have another 11 comments, but they are all the exact same. They copy-pasted the same, so I'm just gonna read the actual message, I'm not gonna read it 11 times.
Mr. Mayor, just for purposes of the record, mention all the names that were submitted and the comment.
Of course. So I will do the names first. Shannon Sweeney. Devon Lorigo. Jen Switzer. Cheryl Blake. Zachary Yates. Kristen Luckman. Kaitlyn Blake. Mary Beth Acceline. And Darlene. These last names are a little bit difficult, too, for I don't want to mispronounce them, but they're all from New York State as well. The message resets follow. As you may know, the veterinary contract between Laredo Animal Care Services, LAX, and Austin Pets Alive will no longer be in effect as APA has made the difficult decision to provide a 30-day notice to end their veterinary services. Over the last eight months, APA helped more than 1,000 animals at LAX. Unfortunately, they were met with much resistance from shelter leadership. Austin Pets Alive has brought a great deal of assistance to Laredo and has played a crucial role in supporting Laredo Animal Care Services extending beyond veterinary care. The absence of APA in Laredo puts significant resources for deserving animals and their future owners at risk. Here are a few of the benefits of Austin Pets Alive partnership has brought to Laredo. Free online training modules and education opportunities for the staff at LAX. Marketing and communication strategies that have increased engagement on the official LAX Facebook page. Since March, APA doubled spay-and-neuter surgeries at LAX to over 1,000 animals. APA provided an addition of approximately $500,000 invested into Laredo over and above the contract for vet services. $90,000 pet food donation for the community via HSUS Chewy secured by APA. APA has created a robust transportation plan to find homes for LAX animals via transport to other states valued at $4,000 to $5,000 per trip at no cost to the city of Laredo. Those are all the comments.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Noraida, we, I believe, councilmembers received a package of comments from high school students. Did they arrive?
They did not come in through our, this is everything that we have. Remember that to submit a written comment, it closes at noon today, so if they submitted something after, I did not receive them, because we have to close the comments to verify that all of these people are a real person on the other side of what they've submitted.
All right, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve appointments on both the regular agenda and supplemental agenda as percentage.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to also make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to open public hearings number one through thirteen.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
May I proceed? May I proceed? Number one, public hearing instruct reordance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot eight, block four four six, western division located at eighteen nineteen Santa Rita Avenue from R three mixed residential district to B four highway commercial district, the planning and zoning commission recommend recommended denial of the proposed zone change, and staff does not support the application. Number two, public hearing instruct reordance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot one, two, and three, block eight nineteen, eastern division of the and a zero point zero two eight acre tract of land out of an alley south of lots one, one through three, block eight nineteen, eastern division of the city of Laredo, Texas, as per volume seven, page fifteen, Webb County plat records located at fifteen oh one Chihuahua Street from R O residential offices to B three, community business district. The planning and zoning commission recommended denial of the proposed change, and staff does not support the application. Number three, public hearing instruct reordance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately two point zero acre tract of land being all of the two point zero acres conveyed to Grupo Immobiliario Salinas, indeed recorded in volume fifty four oh eight, page six seventy one. Webb County official public records, Webb County, Texas, being a por- portion of the nine point nine four acre tract of land conveyed to Antonio Castillo Junior and Carlos Castillo, recorded in volume five four seven, page two oh five, deed records of the Webb County, Webb County, Texas, and also being part of a survey twenty one fifty abstract six sixty D Sanchez original grantee, Webb County, Texas, located north of Jackman Road and east of Casa Verde Road, from R one single-family residential di- residential district to R two multifamily residential district. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change, and staff supports the application. Number four, public hearing instruct reordance amending the zoning ordinance of the si- map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lot one, block one, Alexander Commercial Subdivision, phase fifteen, located at eleven nineteen Fenwick Drive, suite two oh six, two thousand six hundred thirty-nine square feet. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed special use permit, and staff did not support the application. Number five, public hearing instruct reordance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately one point one eighteen acres located in the San Jos- in the Jose Antonio Diaz survey thirty-four abstract seven sixty-two, Webb County part of a fifty-eight point zero six acre tract described in tract four of conveyance documented to ALS Laredo Holdings Limited Liability Company, recorded in volume thirty-three forty-two, pages six eight seven of the Webb County official public records, Webb County, Texas, located east of South Egido Avenue and north of La Terr- La Terraza Way from R one A single-family reduced area district to B one limited business district. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change, and staff supports the application. Public hearing instruct reordance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lots three and four, block sixty-one, Carlton Garden subdivision located at fifty-two sixteen Springfield Avenue, suite three and four, one thousand eight hundred ninety-three square feet. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed special use permit, and staff does not support the application. Number seven, public hearing instruct reordance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately one point nine eight nine one acre situated in Porcion twenty-four Torribio Rodriguez original grantee abstract two sixty-eight and being out of the two hundred point six eight acre tract of land conveyed to Charco Land Sales Limited Liability Company as recorded in volume fifty four hundred, pages eight twenty-four to eight twenty-nine, official public records of Webb County, Texas, located east of, east east of the Bob Bullock Loop and north of the ins- Inspiration Parkway from R one single-family residential district to B three community business district. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change, and staff supports the application. Number eight, public hearing instruct reordance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by repealing ordinance tw- twenty eleven oh zero four three, which authorized a condition use permit for a roofing company and authorized the issuance of a conditional use permit for a cleaning service on lots one and two, block fifteen thirty-seven, eastern division located at two six, twenty-six oh one, East Ash Street. The planning and zoning commission recommended denial of the proposed conditional use permit, and staff supports the application. Public hearing check, number nine, public hearing check reordance amending zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by amending ordinance twenty, twenty twenty-two oh zero eight three, which authorized special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lot one, block one, Imami Plat- Imami Plaza Platt located at thirty-three eleven, East Delmar Boulevard, suite one oh one, six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four square feet. In order to reduce the square footage and amend the hours of operation, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed special use per- permit amendment, and staff supports the application. Number ten, public hearing check reordance authorize city manager to enter into and, and execute a memorandum of understanding M O U between the City of Laredo Police Department, Texas Anti-Gang Center, and San Antonio Anti-Gang Center via the Texas Department of Public Safety for the purpose of executing a transfer in investigative equipment to accept said equipment and to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three special police fund budget by appropriate and increasing revenues and expenditures in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand seven ninety-two to reflect the value of the investigative equipment and accessories. The equipment will be used for the drug-related investigation as part of the LPD tag program. The acquisition of equipment and mutual agreement is at no cost to the City of Laredo. Public hearing check reordance, number eleven, public hearing check reordance ratifying the execution of a contract amendment from the Health and Human Services Commission in the amount of one million eighteen thousand nine hundred and three with a s- grant match award. Sorry, with the grant match award of one million eight, eighteen thousand nine hundred and three for a total amount of two million thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and six and amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four full-time equivalent listing by adding one physician assistant, two hundred and nine physician, and two office assistants, two oh one physicians for the City of Laredo Health Department Community Mental Health Program for the term from September first, twenty twenty-three through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Number twelve, public hearing instruct reordance and ordinance of the City of Laredo, Texas, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, nine one one regional administration budget by appropriate additional revenues and expenditures provided by the Commission of the State Emergency Communications in the amount of one hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred sixty-two to provide additional funding for the Jim Hockstar webs of Fata Counties for a period beginning September one, twenty twenty-three and ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Number thirteen, public hearing instruct reordance and ordinance of the City of Laredo amending the chapter eighteen, article three of section fifteen of the Code of Ordinances by changing an application fee for all garage sales of fifteen dollars, increasing the maximum number of garage sale permits for persons of five and exempting documented nonprofit organizations from the fees and maximum limit requirement.
Are you finished reading it?
Yes. Well, he is.
Okay, number one, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Mayor, we have a comments.
Comment on number one?
Uh, no, sir, I just wanted to see if you were gonna go one at a time.
Alright, go ahead.
No, we have a speaker. That's already.
Alright.
Ruben again?
Yes.
Speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council members. Uh, mi nombre es Ruben Garza. Yo soy de la propiedad dieciocho y nueve de Santa Rita. La propuesta que tengo de hacer un cambio de zona de R tres A B cuatro es para una auto body paint shop. Um, es un negocio que quiero implementar para un solo negocio con una un término de largo plazo. Quiero que tomen en cuenta el, que la zona en la que está el, el terreno es un R tres. Tomando en cuenta que en contraesquina. Es un R tres y en contraesquina cuenta con un, ah, M one, que viene siendo de las zonas con mayor intensidad en la zona. Está solamente en contraesquina. Eh, el lugar en el que quiero implementar el negocio cuenta con suficiente espacio, el cual puede permitir, eh, elaborar correctamente con las medidas necesarias, el cual para este tipo de negocios se tiene que implementar un paint boot. Uno ya se cotizó, ya está la forma de cotización para el cuarto de pintura que se requiere específicamente para evitar cualquier tipo de químicos y no dañar ningún, ah, nada en el medio ambiente. El exceso del pintura que se expulsa a través de los filtros de escape. La función principal de los filtros de escape es eliminar y recolectar eficientemente las partículas de pintura a medida que van saliendo por la chimenea de escape. Se plantea todo de acuerdo para no dañar el medio ambiente y no es el primer caso que se presenta de este mismo tipo de negocio en una zona R tres para cambiarlo a un B cuatro. Ya se ha investigado y se ha implementado más tipos de negocios, uno que está, por ejemplo, por Miro, que las medidas necesarias que piden es tener el paint boot, verdad? Que ya se cotizó, no se ha comprado todavía hasta que se apruebe la propuesta que traigo de cambio de zona. Y espero que puedan tomar en cuenta esas, eh, esas especificaciones a mi favor. De igual manera, he platicado con todos los vecinos que están alrededor de la zona circulada que se aparece ahí en pantalla, y ningún vecino, ah, está en contra. Todos han hecho su por la idea porque antes era un terreno baldío completamente. Ahorita está más limpio, hay más cámaras, vigilancia. Eh, y ninguno he tenido una referencia negativa de su parte.
Thank you. So we have the comment for. Do we have the comment against? For or against? Mr. Navarro? There was another comment?
Madam, uh, Chair, if we can go back. So there, there's a little bit of history. Orlan Navarro, planning director, for the record. There's a little history on this property. Um, on May eighth of twenty twenty-three, the owner applicant received a citation from the Zoning Enforcement Office. So the citation stated five offenses at the location of eighteen nineteen Santa Rita Avenue. The offenses are as follows: operating auto repair auto body paint shop uh, in a residential R three zone. Operation, operation of a vehicle holding or impound yard in a residential. Operating a business without a certificate of occupancy. Construction of a auto shop commercial building without proper con- uh, construction permits. Construction of insulation prohibi- uh, prohibited metal fence. So this item was brought, uh, before us, but once again, it, it sits in a, in a residential area. Uh, and staff and planning, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial, and so does staff.
Mayor, there were, Mayor, there were, um, there was comments for and against, and I believe there's no more, so I don't know if you just wanna ask the wishes of councils and to.
Yes, go ahead, Council.
Just motion to close and deny.
Motion to close and deny, second.
Alright, motion?
Mayor, uh, just point of clarification from legal. We would need a super majority, correct?
Sorry, yes, it'd be seven.
We need seven to approve it?
Yes, to approve.
Okay, but, uh, to close and deny as recommended to.
Just a simple majority?
Yes.
Alright, motion?
There's a second, maybe?
There's a second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
To deny.
To deny, yes.
Item number two is, um, the applicant asked to table the item. Time certain, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, pa- second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion pass. Number three, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for, oh. Mr. Mayor, I know the gentleman's here to speak on this item. I see that Councilmember Gutierrez stepped out briefly. Could we move on to number, public hearing number four and give him an opportunity to be heard by the council member of that district?
Maybe number five?
Yes, noted.
So num- number five, yes, because number four is also Councilmember Gutierrez.
Proceed to number five.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number five? For or against? For or against? For or against?
I'm the mayor, uh, city council members, uh, Danny Wise for the record, uh, I represent the seller of the property. We've got a Dollar Tree coming to loan myself sore. We think it's a good addition to the neighborhood. And, uh, I'm here to answer any questions.
I've got motion to close and introduce.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number six. For or against? For or against? For or against? No.
Mr. Mayor, this, uh, item that pertains to the district I represent, um, Mr. Navarro.
Yes.
Staff's in support of this? No, it's not in support of this. Could you tell me why?
Yes, um, Orlan Navarro for the record, planning director. This location is on Springfield and Carlton. There's a well wash right on the corner, the northwest corner. These are, uh, the, the restaurants that are right next door. They have a little strip, uh, there. There, there's probably four. There's a beauty salon, there's a couple of other businesses, and this restaurant, it's a ramen, uh, ramen, uh, restaurant. They expanded their operation and they wanted to, um, they're, they're trying to, uh, serve alcohol. Um, they have maybe, possibly, three parking slots there. Uh, now, I was told that they were working with the neighbor across the street to try to incorporate more parking, but I have yet to get that, that documentation.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may direct legal, could we, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna try. Could we approve this contingent to the parking, um, letter received? Um, that they have promised planning that hasn't been delivered in order to approve this?
This is a conditional, yes.
We, that would be acceptable, Mr. Navarro? Would staff be okay with that if we get a, that letter, and once they get the letter, then they can move forward?
This is a special use permit. We can make it a comment to the, the permit?
I'd like to make a.
In hopes that I can get that documented.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to close and introduce contingent to the requester submitting the documentation requested by, um, our planning and zoning department as it pertains to parking.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring back public hearings three and four.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number three? For or against? For or against? For or against?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Francisco Ramos, Ramos Engineering for the record. I'm here to speak for the zone change. Uh, so this is a, it's a two-acre tract, um, located about two hundred and eighty feet northeast of the intersection of Jackman and Casa Verde, or Frank Sinatra Boulevard also. Um, so it's a two-acre tract, uh, it's out of a, a nine point nine acre tract. I know uh, one of the only concerns that we had was, was drainage, uh, with the neighbors that are surrounding that, that two-acre tract. Um, so when it comes to planning, uh, we'll go ahead and detain all that water that, the, the, the post development water and just release the predevelopment water or, uh, 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 out to that, uh, to, to where the, the natural flow goes. Uh, we will try to, we will slow down the water that's, that's coming out. Um, just because it's, it's, it's a, it's a fairly small track, so we're, we'll detain all that water that's, that, that's gonna be held out. We'll also try to, instead of taking all that water out to the back, we'll try to bring some water, some water out to the front also, so we can kind of try to split the, the, the property in half. Um, uh, out of those two acres, um, we are the, as part of the plat, there's also being the, there's also a right-of-way dedication to the city of Laredo on, on that plat.
Motion to close and introduce?
Motion second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next is number four. For or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Motion, second. All in favor?
Uh, Mayor, may I? I have a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Navarro, it says here that staff did not support the application. Is, is there a reason why?
Uh, simply, uh, parking. We have overlapping businesses there. We have, I believe it's a dentist office. Uh, and we have a couple of other restaurants. They're overlapping, so it's real difficult to get, uh, the parking for the area. Uh, but that was the, the main concern that we had.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next.
Number seven.
Seven? Number seven. For or against? For or against? For or against?
Sorry, motion to close and introduce?
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number eight. For or against? For or against? For or against? We have a comment on num- item number eight.
We have, uh, the applicant would like to speak.
One, Bottega.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ma'am, go, go right ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, go right ahead.
Lower the mic.
Juan Botelho?
Mr. Botelho, you want to go first?
Go ahead.
Lydia Gonzalez.
Hold on just a minute.
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing. Lydia Gonzalez?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Lydia Gonzalez, I live on twenty-six oh three East Montgomery, which is the following street after Ash. And I am opposed, again, to the recommendation of putting a chemical warehouse with chemicals across the street, practically in the playground of Milton Elementary. My refusal is because of the fact that we have an elementary school practically in their face. I am a retired school nurse from far northeastern, and we were fully aware of what was going on in the petroleum companies and what would happen every morning, you had to know. And we would put protective measures in place. All it takes is for one incident of this so-called chemical warehouse, cleaning warehouse with chemicals to occur to put our children in jeopardy. What is Laredo going to do for emergency services for an elementary school? So what I ask you is, please, please consider. Our wind currents in Laredo go south to east, to west. What is smack southwest of this company you want to put in there? An elementary school, one of our highest performing elementary schools. What are you going to tell the parents? We okayed it. EPA said it was okay. We have it in containers. Hello? I know that warehouse has no air conditioning. The heat in Laredo? Nobody's going to be there at night to watch what the temperature is doing and whether those chemical containers are going to burst. So I really would like for you to consider the fact that you are endangering the children of Laredo. You are endangering their health, their lives, and their futures. So please, if you don't care about your smallest constituents, the children of Laredo, then I don't know what you all are doing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Juan Botelho, for item number eight? Botelho, I'm sorry, Juan Botelho.
Good evening, councilor, mayor, my name is Juan Botelho. And I own the property right across twenty-six oh one east dash minus twenty-six oh four east dash. Okay? I've been here multiple times, multiple times, at the old building, fighting a cause. Conditioner use permits, B ones, B four. I was there before, I think I saw about four different term mayors. San Ramírez, you know, Ms. Flores, Mr. Salinas, and now you, Mr. Trivino. We're here again, and we're here for the same cause. This warehouse continues to try and get a condition use permit. Past city councils have denied them a condition use permit. A B one, a B four. A warehouse does not belong in a residential area. Past councilmen mentioned, a warehouse belongs in a warehouse area. That's where it belongs. I mean, buyer beware, we've heard those words before. When somebody buys a warehouse, you better know that you're buying an R one. Just because it's a warehouse, doesn't mean you can put something inside. I mean, it's an R one. And I've lived there since ninety-four. And we had concerns with the previous owner, and now with the owner right now, bigger concerns. It's almost thirty years. Treinta años. Some of you guys probably are younger than that, okay? But we could keep on fighting the cause. I was absent last city planning and zoning commission, September seventh, I had an event. And they denied it. I mean, they stressed out, very important, they stressed out that this company that wants to come in cannot function on a condition use permit. A conditional permit is the lowest you can get. And why do I know that? Because I've been here before. City attorneys tell me that, city managers told me that, the mayor told me that. Basically, what they do, they can only get their orders and out, they can't function in there. Conditioner use permit, no. And city planning and zoning mentioned that, that they cannot function on a condition use permit. They need a C, they need a B one or B four. And I don't think we need to give them a B one or a B four. I know they're going to mention about chemicals, that they're non-hazardous. To me, chemicals are chemicals, no matter what. No matter what kind of chemical, and then we have a school. And I was going to talk about the three Ps, a children, a community. And chemicals are right there. Okay, and again, we've been fighting for this for about thirty years, council. And again, I mentioned the reasons why I'm opposing it. We have kids, we have the school, we have communities, okay? I have, I have a petition right here. We have about eight or nine neighbors that could not be here. I have Francisco and Sinta Ramírez who live on Elm Street, they oppose it. Their husband, their daughter, who lives on twenty-six twenty Elm, they oppose it. Mr. José Rafael Treviño, who lives on twenty-six oh nine Elm, they oppose it. Dolores Barton, twenty-seven oh seven Elm, she opposes it, and her son. Eduardo Rabigo, one of my neighbors, opposes it. Adriana Andrés Navarro, who lives next to the Gonzalez, they oppose it. Mr. Ordiales, they oppose it, also Montgomery. Rose Cardenas, who lives there next to me, oppose it. So we're not the only one. The majority of the people right now, they don't want it. A warehouse needs to go where a warehouse belongs. Who's going to be accountable? Who's going to be accountable if something happens? I know Mr. Navarro is talking about, we're going to keep the chemicals. One child is too many. One child is too many. And why are we here? Because we care. If I didn't care, I wouldn't be here. If they didn't care, they wouldn't be here. Okay, and I know some of my neighbors could not be here today, but they signed a petition. I know as better as you're fighting the cause over on the Mines Road. We don't want another one next to a school. And this, the playground is maybe what, less than a hundred feet? Previous owners, previous tenants moved from there because they were afraid of running over kids. The people that want to go in there, they have trucks, they have eleven employees. Where are you going to store them? Previous owners were giving citations for parking in the right of way. Every time I backed up, I hit several vehicles because they were parking the right of way. And we'll go outside, you want to, you want to, you want to file a report? Then we're in the cup, they shouldn't be there. They had a C U P. Okay, that's all I have to say, I was going to keep it simple. You know, really get real emotional because I've been here so many times. I believe five times that we've been here, not here, but in the building downtown. City council has denied them. Has denied. So let's do the right thing, and I hope you do the right thing, because it's right next to a school. And it's going to affect the community, the elderly. And I'm still waiting for sidewalks. Thirty years, I'm waiting for sidewalks. I don't know if I can get them. That's all I have to say, guys, thanks for listening to me. And I'm sorry if I yell, I used to be an ex-coach, so I raised my voice. I don't know if my wife's going to talk, but.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
We'll discuss the zoning item briefly, but the sidewalks are getting there. We're almost there, okay?
Appreciate, appreciate it, Mr. Torres, you know, I worked with several, Mr. Amaya when he was there, Mr. Narváez when he was there, and now, now you, I know my, I really appreciate your help, whatever you can. The kids walk through the middle of the street to get to school.
We're almost there, it's taken us years, but we're almost there.
I know, I know a lot of kids are on the east side of Arkansas, they cross that street and they get to Milton. I mean, health and safety is very important, I know everybody here will advocate for health and safety. That's the number one priority. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I don't know if my wife's going to talk.
All right, thank you very much. General D. Botelho, item number eight?
Yes, good evening, mayor, council panel. I did like that statement, better health for our community, by Erica Martínez. Let me just let you know who I am, a little bit of my personal life. I started in banking, but I ended up as an LBN, and now I'm a specialized educator. And I hopefully be diagnosing later soon, because I did got a master's in to further my education. So knowing those areas, it's about caring. So I care. It is very hard to see that this warehouse has not been finalized. The owners, they need to understand, you know, that it's a residential area. When we purchased our land, we were the first ones to build. And I'm never going to forget my father going, you know, outside because we couldn't get out. We had a special brother who had a brain tumor, and we had to take him out. But there was, just show you what we had to deal with. This is before this company went in. I don't know, Mr. Can we? Well, we were blocked, so we had to tell the persons, because they had flat beds. I guess they were also, you know, that was a previous owner before the recent one that's there. So they use flat beds to unload and load, but they use the streets. There was no parking area to unload and disload. So that's when we realized, why are we facing this situation? So we ended up, you know, asking for help from the city, the zoning, the ordinances. And that's where we found out that they were already non-compliant with the ordinances were that stood, you know, especially with eighteen wheelers circulating close to residential areas. We continue. So like my husband says, we've been here for decades with the same issues. And now I do feel very comfortable talking to you, especially to our mayor, Ms. Pérez, Vanessa Pérez, Alisa. We know that you all have a very strong background to advocate for health in our community. So we're asking, that's the only thing we're asking, we're hoping that you will do all the right thing. Because any chemicals, any debris do affect in time. Maybe we already got affected because we were dealing with a roofing company. We don't know. But we try, you know, to let the community aware, or everybody around us. You know, they're not supposed to be there. But really, nothing happened because we're still here. So we're hoping, with all your expertise, and now with Dr. King, knowing how strong anything can affect our lungs. Dr. Treviño, you guide us through COVID. So you know how delicate this is, this, you know, anything close to children. And then also, our neighbors have medical issues. So we're just hoping that you'll do the best thing, you know, for that area. I mean, I do understand, you know, the owners part, but they also have to understand that when they purchase this area, it is a residential area. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Daniel Tijerina, on item number eight? Daniel Tijerina.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Sorry, it was Daniel Tijerina?
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Danny Tijerina, for the record. And I'm here to speak in favor of this item and answer any questions you may have related to land use and zoning. But I'll turn it over to Dr. Worshing.
Yes, I'm Dr. Sandra Worshing, this is my husband, Joseph Worshing.
Go ahead.
So we are the owners of Serpro of Norcalwado. We do water and fire damage cleaning and restoration, mold remediation, we do COVID disinfecting. We are a franchise, but we're also a small family-owned business. The majority of our work is done off of Serpro premises, usually at the customer's location. We provide services to government entities, to school districts, universities, and college, as well as private, commercial, and residential facilities. We adhere to strict corporate guidelines, as well as the guidelines set forth by these entities. We do have a corporate office that we need to represent. We're here to request a conditional use permit in order to operate in the Ash location. The city planning staff supported us in applying for this permit. We met with the fire department, and we also met with the environmental department, and they cleared any potential concerns city staff had in regards to our cleaning supplies. Some of the concerns that were brought up at the PNC were pertaining to the current property owner about several citations and the perceived inaction of the prior city administration in regards to enforcement. But that has nothing to do with us. We do not have eighteen wheelers delivering materials and blocking streets. We only use UPS and FedEx. Our vehicles, our employees' vehicles are going to be parked inside the facilities. There's not going to be any disturbance within the area. So any issues that we understand the neighbors are upset about, they have nothing to do with us. Now, regarding the storage of the cleaning supplies that we have, these cleaning supplies can also be found in school custodial closets and under kitchen sinks. There was a concern that was brought up as to whenever someone Googled our company, Serpro, employees with hazmat suits popped out in the images, but this was a national campaign done by Serpro, and they were advertising the services of cleaning for COVID. So in no instance, there's no reason for us to be operating in our facilities using those hazmat suits. Currently, this property has an M one conditional use permit designation, which entails heavier industrial use. We're asking for a B one, which is actually less intensive. So if you really think about it, there's several options for this property. If you want this property to be residential, then the city will have to buy it because the numbers don't work for residential. If you want to maintain the status quo, the neighbors will continue to have issues with the current owner. And if these issues persist, you may end up with a twenty thousand square foot vacant building, which is never good for a neighborhood. Or you can support our C U P and get a good neighborhood. We are not going to make the same mistakes that the previous owner did. We actually care about our community. And we do not, we are not planning on doing any harm or store any material that can be harmful for children.
Joseph Worshing, for the record. I am Laredo's only.
Um, I am Laredo's only licensed mold remediator. I'm also Laredo's only licensed mold assessment consultant. And the very premise behind those licenses is health and safety. The very premise behind our business is health and safety. First thing I do whenever, uh, main concern whenever we walk into anything, wherever there has been a damage, trip, a slip, trip and fall. Every, you know, water everywhere, busted pipes, fires, you name it. The whole goal of our business is to get you back to where you were before tragedy strikes. So in the end, we are the good neighbor you want around. We are the good neighbor that will come in and help you in your most moment of need. So, um, if there's any questions or anything at all, I mean, feel free to ask. I'm an open book.
All right, Mr. Ruben Gonzalez, if you can. Go ahead, please.
Excuse me. My name is Ruben Gonzalez. I live in 26 O'Trees, Montgomery. I worked thirty-three years when HIDE, Houston and the Penn School District. I retired from the maintenance department. I see a lot of buildings that catch on fire or water damage, and they hire these kind of companies. They, we used to be hired service masters. Service masters go over there and clean it up. They don't use just regular chemicals. They use the strong chemicals, let me tell you. 'Cause I see it. Probably you don't see it, but they see. These companies, they go and do the good jobs. They, I don't, I don't complain about the job. I complain about what they say they use. And they don't bring only one gallon. They bring fifty-five gallon drums. Now, what happened when the leftovers? They put in the drain? They, they got a special truck coming, pick up the trash or whatever? Uh, it's not that much parking there. Because the dumpster takes like two parkings. And the other day, they said they got twelve trucks, twelve servicemen. So it's not enough park, I don't think it's enough parking. I'm, I'm very sick, and I don't have, I don't wanna go too far. But just think about it, we have two hundred and seventy-eight buildings in HIDE. I recognize each one. I worked thirty-three years. And we don't have anything across the street with company, with chemicals. Any school, any school in Houston, they don't have anything across the street with chemicals. So thank you. Think about it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, um, I, this item or this conditional use permit is actually, um, in the district I represent, like the members of the audience that spoke, is across the street from Milton Elementary. I did meet with the owners, uh, maybe two times, um, and then casually one more time. I bumped into Mr. Worshing. Um, and obviously, uh, when I saw the narrative and the issues of J.J. Flores, the existing, um, building or the existing business there, um, I understood the communities or the people that live around that area's concerns, the apartment complex next door. I know that there's law enforcement officer that lives right across the street, north of J.J. Flores, two actually law enforcement officers. So I'm very familiar with the constituents there. Um, at first, I heard no issues from, from them, and I even told Mr. Worshing, the people around there seem to be okay with, and I wanna say this to hurt Mr. Flores's business, but in getting Mr. Flores out of the community and bringing in a different type of business, right? However, as time went by, the narrative changed. The community is concerned of the chemicals, right? Um, whether they're under the, the kitchen sink type of chemicals, which is what both Mr. and Dr. Worshing mentioned, what Mr. Tejera also mentioned. Right now, I did receive calls also from the school district concerned about, um, this type of business. I would hope, would have hoped that you all would have, um, informed the neighbors, right? Um, and, and Mr. Tejera is very familiar with the process of what covers in the area, so that maybe you could, could have explained, um, the, the type of chemicals, um, being, that will be utilized. Um, I understand your, your position of, um, the, uh, current roofing business right now having, uh, what is it, an M, uh, M1? An M1 zoning, which is unheard of, right, in a residential area? Um, I wouldn't want to live across the street or anywhere near an M1 property if, if I lived around there. And to me, this sounded like it was going to be like an RO type of business. Um, I also had conversations with Mr. Navarro. Um, and Mr. Navarro, can you approach briefly? Um, when Mr. Navarro about this, because, um, I figured when Mr. Worshing approached me, um, it's the J.J. Flores Roofing Warehouse. When I heard M1 and his business needing a, a B zoning, I said, well, there shouldn't be an issue. It's actually a downgrade. I'm sure people would be happy with this. I discussed this with Mr. Navarro. And then lo and behold, we found out it was a residential zoning, not even an M1. And that in two thousand and eleven, um, uh, was it till then that the city officially allowed him to make the change because they were operating illegally prior to that, right? So Mr. Navarro then got, um, Fire Department. I don't know if Chief Hurt is in the audience. He's back there. Chief, could you approach as well as the Emergency Management Coordinator and Chief? And also Mr. Porter. Is Mr. Porter in the audience, um, Chief Lundin?
So just, uh, just to...
Just that we can hear from everybody that was involved in this. And I hate to do this now, because again, this should have been taken care of with the constituents who are here, um, to explain to them what this business was. But I wanna hear from everyone, um, that was involved through this whole process, right? 'Cause it's been a lengthy one. And Mr. Navarro, could you enlighten us while we get, um, Mr. Porter?
So just, uh, the clarification, 'cause I, just to help Chief out here. Um, Captain Alondo that works in our office, uh, was kind enough to visit with the, with the owners just to guide them and basically guided them to the Environmental Department, where they're the ones that review that. So when, when you say they, they talked to fire, they were just given guidance of where to go with their information.
But I'm assuming that all that leads to your support of this item, right? I'm trying to justify why there's a support and a denial, so that the public and the constituents understand before I make my motion.
Right. So what we did was, um, I recognize Servpro, the name and, and what they do. So we did some research. We called Midland, Amarillo, San Marcos, San Antonio, McAllen, um, and Brownsville, and Corpus Christi, to see what zones they have their Servpros in. Uh, what we found out was they're, they're in an industrial, right? There's different categories of types of Servpro services, and there are some that handle big issues. And they, they have equipment that they have to keep, uh, in, in bigger properties and more of an M1 type of, of business. So Mr. Worshing came to my office, and I said, uh, that he would need to verify all his chemicals and visit with the, with the, with staff at Environmental just to, to make sure what he has wouldn't harm any of the kids. 'Cause we're very familiar with the school. That's, 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 we know there's a school there. Um, so that's what we did, but, um, there's different categories of Servpros. So this is, uh, for lack of a better way of saying it, and I don't wanna insult anybody, but like a entry level type, um, for, for the company. And so that's, that's why we were, I was comfortable with the fact that this was a dispatch service that, um, gets an eight-hundred number call, and then they go out and they service. Uh, I believe they currently, right now, have contracts with LISD and UISD?
Yeah, we have contracts with UISD, yes.
So with the UISD?
Yes, the UISD we have, and we're in the process of again.
So, taking that into consideration, and the type of business, it wasn't necessarily a B4 type operation or an M1 operation. It was more of a B1 style operation. So, um, the next step was go to Environmental. Show, show them all your forms that you have, that, that shows the chemicals or the chemicals that everyone talks about you're using, and get clearance from Environmental. Environmental then called me back saying that they were okay with it. Uh, we put a few comments in the special use permit that states that if they improve or take on different chemicals, they would have to find another location for their, their facility. But, um, that's, that's the whole chain of events of how we got to this point here.
Can we hear Mr. Porter briefly?
Yes.
Yes, John Porter, Environmental.
I don't think we need to hear from you. Mr. Navarro already clarified Captain's involvement.
Oh.
No, go ahead, Mr. Porter.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, on, on the, yes, based on what was submitted to us, we didn't think that, um, there was a hazmat permit needed, based on quantities and, and what was being stored. Um, I don't, I don't currently have that list, but that's what we based it on.
Mr. Mayor, so, um, after hearing this, obviously you've got two sides, right? You've got an M1 business, and you see the opportunity of getting rid of the M1 conditional use permit to try and bring a B1. But, um, in the way I see it, with the constituents present and those that couldn't be here, that did call me, um, I think this is their opportunity to get a business out of the neighborhood, no matter how safe it is, or even if it's a residential office type of business, right? There is no reason why a business should have been permitted in the first place, in the middle of a neighborhood, in what we feel still is the northern part of the Heights, right? There's no reason why there should be a business in the middle. It's the only business in the whole area, right? So I, it is my duty and responsibility to be the voice of the people that elected me, to be the voice of the people that actually live there, right? And if this would be somewhere you all would be moving into, and you wanna operate a business, you know, in your backyard type of thing, and you're part of the community, then I'd have a different sentiment. And as much as I would want to support this and look the other way as, um, a decrease of zoning from an M1 that shouldn't have existed there to an RO or even a B1, like Mr. Navarro mentioned, I think that the people that live in the community are being very outspoken that this is their opportunity to get rid of a business that shouldn't have been there in the last thirty years in the first place, right? So, um, I'm going to have to make a motion to close and deny the request in order to honor the people that live there, that elected me, to ensure that their community is safeguarded.
Mayor, second for discussion. I have a, a comment. Um, yes, so, two things here. Number one, um, I think this highlights the reason why we have to be very careful in issuing special use and conditional use permits and in granting zone changes because, you know, these are just issues that have come up from past decisions. But my second concern here is that when, I deal with this a lot, like Mr. Boteo and his wife brought up, in the Mines Road a lot, and where you have M1s next to Moller Elementary. And one of the things we did when I first came in is we passed a hazardous materials ordinance that wouldn't allow chemical storage within five hundred feet of an elementary, of a school. So I'm a little disappointed that I'm not seeing any of that reference in any of these notes here. It's almost like a forgotten ordinance that we passed. But we did take care of this type of situation through the creation of an ordinance that, quite frankly, is not even being considered, which is very disappointing because it did pass council unanimously. We don't allow hazardous materials to be stored within five hundred feet of a school based on ordinance that was created in 2021. Why was that not brought up in any of this?
Can, can I address that?
Go ahead.
It's for council, it's for the...
Yes, go ahead.
So, for the record, what we did was, um, when a situation like this happens, and, and they came in talking about that they did have cleaning supplies and what have you, that's immediately directed over to the Environmental Department. And they do have somebody who reviews that case, and then they get back to me to tell me what the situation is. Like Director Porter, uh, mentioned, they didn't find any, uh, reason for a hazmat, uh, permit. But as soon as that, this comes in, our department doesn't review their chemical list. So we send it to Environmental so that they could review that.
Mayor, point of order, clarification?
Go ahead.
Well, we talked about this ordinance. We brought up the hazardous materials, and was deemed that everything can be considered a hazardous material. In some instances, Mr. Porter brought up that, you know, even water, depending on how it's called, can be considered a hazardous material. I know, Mr. Porter, we, I thought the intent of the ordinance was to address all these chemicals.
Um, so, on, on that, on that, uh, that where you have to be a certain distance from schools, that's if they were to be required to have a hazardous material, uh, storage or handling permit?
We never specified that in the ordinance.
It, it's, it's in the Chapter Thirty-three ordinance that we talk about that. And so, for instance, you know, are there hazardous materials at a gas station? Yes, there are. But since they're not required to get a hazmat permit, they, there, there's no requirement that they have to be that certain distance from, uh, a school or a retailer that sells hazardous materials, uh, like bleach and other cleaning materials. Since they don't have to get that permit, they, they're not, they don't have to follow that.
Okay. Well, I think the intent of the creation of that ordinance was to address these types of situations where businesses are using chemicals as well. So I think we should revisit that ordinance to make sure that it, we don't get, have to go through this over and over again. Thank you. There's a motion and a second, Mayor?
Motion is there. Second is there.
Yes, second. I second it.
Second. All in favor? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, um, if I may, um, I was not able to, um, actually, you know, speak on the item. Can I still do that at this point?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Can I? Okay. The Worshings are, uh, own a local family-owned business that has a proven track record and provides services that are very essential to our community. We need this business here in Laredo. The Worshings have been an open book, not only with me, and completely transparent with city staff as well, which is why the Environmental Department cleared them wholeheartedly. Now, I wanna read you an email verbatim from Mr. Sotelo, who's with the hazmat department. Said, "I had a meeting with Mr. Joseph Worshing III this morning, and looked over the materials he uses in providing his services, and determined he does not require permit with us. He has a small inventory of cleaning supplies, similar to what households normally have, and are in retail packaging containers. Nothing requiring a permit, as they are considered workstation cleaning products." The same products you would find, the same products I probably use as a school teacher at UISD to sanitize until I saw them. Now, beyond that, you know, it appears that the Worshings are, you know, paying the price for the sins of the current property owner, and that's very, very unfair. Now, uh, in regards to the issue of the building, the building is there, and it's not going anywhere. Now, I mean, councilman, the, the only reasonable options that you have is to, you know, go in there, condemn the building, take it over. Because I can guarantee you, the seller is not gonna be able to find a buyer who can make the numbers work to convert it to residential. Um, the issues are gonna persist with the Floruses, as they've continued to have. And what may eventually happen is you may be sitting with a twenty thousand square foot warehouse vacant in the middle of a residential area. And, and I can tell you, the police chief will probably vouch for this, but the last thing you want is a vacant building in a residential area. If, if we've learned anything about that, we've learned from Mercy Hospital. Look at what happens there. Crime, deterioration. It is a, it is a widely accepted planning theory and widely accepted by law enforcement throughout. They are trying to find a new home. They operate a legitimate business. They do things the right way. They do things by the book. And we have been cleared by Environmental, and your own planning department is in support of the CUP. This is all, uh, unfortunately, some commission members were, were, you know, it, it was, it, it was a very emotional decision based on fear. And we're, we're presenting facts and logic. And we're asking them to make a decision on logic rather than emotion.
All right, thank you.
Call for the question, Mayor.
Any other comments?
Call for the question, Mayor.
All right, motion had been made.
I have a question. I do have a question.
All right, go ahead.
Um, and I don't know if you can answer this, Mr. Navarro. Does, does the Flores business continue if, if this motion is denied?
They're, uh, currently, my understanding is they're not in the building. It's empty at the moment? Or they're, they're still in there?
They're still utilizing it.
They're still, they're still in the building.
I haven't been there in three years.
Mayor, we can always pull the permit on a conditional or special use. We can always rescind their permit.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. And we're gonna call for the question. All in favor? Go hands. All opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. Number nine?
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
For Mr. Navarro, just a clarification on this. Speaking about hours of operation in particular, and I know it was passed through in P and Z sometime back for Friday and Saturday till two AM.
Yes, please.
Is that still correct, does that still stand?
Yes, sir.
Is that the only thing that we need to amend and the footage?
They're, they're amending, their square footage was actually, they actually applied more, it's, it's less, so they came to make that change and then at the same time, change for, they want to adjust so they can serve breakfast in the morning and then to stay later.
Right. Number nine, for or against, for or against, for or against? Do we have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Danatina for the record, and I'm here in support of this item and answering any questions you may have.
Motion to close and introduce?
Second.
Motion, second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. For or aga, number ten, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Second. Motion, second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Second. Motion, second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Second.
Motion, second, on favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Mayor, may I?
May I?
Second for discussion purposes.
Thank you. The garage sales is, is there, if someone could explain why we're increasing garage sales? I know, I think the original ordinance to try to limit the number of garage sales was really for residents' concerns and neighborhoods that there were too many going on and some people were hosting them as more of a business instead of trying to get rid of a, a personal property from a homeowner. It was, so it's, I think opening up and reducing the price is going to lead to some abuse and I just want to see if anybody's spoken out about it as far as trying to assuage the residents' concerns that this could lead to the abuse of it as we saw before.
Honorable mayor, councilors, for the record, John Hickel, Building Development Services Director, what we're doing is twofold on this. We're cleaning up the ordinance and actually reducing the dollar amount and increasing it to five instead of four. On top of that, there was some cleanup for nonprofit organizations and the fees and all that, they were being charged for that, so cleaning it up for nonprofits and qualifying entities there. We're also streamlining it so that we can incorporate it into some of the automation we're introducing, where these are over the counter permits and as over the counter permits, we're to be able to put them into kiosk and other locations, make them more accessible for that. As far as to your concern with enforcement, the ordinance was written with some enforcement in there, but we have a new, one of the programs that was approved by council is code enforcement and with that we'll be able to track illegal entities that are operating outside of this more easily. So it's actually going to help us enforce it and do it over the counter and encourage people to get their garage sales properly. With that, we're also cleaning up the nonprofit organizations that use these, that don't operate it like a business.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Honorable mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
We're respectfully requesting that maybe an amendment be added to this if we talked to Mr. Hickel about and it's not on, and it's to, to add to the language that you introduced it, we'll put it in the final, the waiving of the fees for the annual garage day, garage sale date that you all approve every year, we're going to bake it into this if we can just get you to amend it.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll bring it back in the final.
I'll accept the amendment as a second as well, mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Steph. Second and amended?
Yes, sir. Can I ask a question on that?
Go ahead.
The, do you want to count that as one of the five?
No. No.
Okay, just to clarify, thank you.
Your favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, council to introduce introductory ordinances fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. And I'd like to make a motion to approve final reading of ordinances eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion, second, on favor?
I do have a question about a couple of the ordinances, does that, does that occur now or does that, we can pass them and?
No, which ones would you want me to pull out?
The, I, I, I just have a question about number seventeen and, and number fourteen and number seventeen.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'll do this, I'm going to withdraw my motion and we'll just start with fourteen that Councilmember Cigarroa has pulled up. So I withdraw my motion.
Motion withdrawn, noted.
Yeah, withdrawal.
So regarding the ordinance, do I need to read that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Regarding the ordinance of the action for our capital improvement program bond in 2023, I just wanted to clarify that this is the, the bond that we had decided to pass earlier at council and this shows us the restrictions for the council member priority funds that were granted in that CIP. Is, it's a question.
If I may, mayor, on this fourteen, it is a misnomer, this should be a first and final because state law only requires one reading and this is not introductory ordinance, it's going to require a second reading, so this is a first and final. So then for purposes of discussion, mayor, if I may be recognized?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve first and final reading of ordinances, of ordinance number fourteen. We'll get a second and then we can jump into discussion.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, go ahead.
So if, if you'll continue, thank you, Mr. Demme.
Okay. For the record, Mark Demme, finance director for the city. And so your question was whether this incorporated in the spending side of it that you had asked for the additions for the priority funds. And yes, that has been considered in the spending of these funds.
So the descriptions here will then define how those seven hundred thousand dollars can be spent by each district?
Well, this, this is how the ordinance is written here of what we're, what was authorized, what we would like authorized, I should say, for the spending in, in here. As those allocate to you, it is expected that you would also be following this as far as where you spend those funds, but you are being given, yes, that's.
Great, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, and just to further clarify, this is the same language that we use anytime we do our bond sales, so we have not changed the language.
Motion to approve? Motion?
There was already a motion.
There's a motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Number fifteen, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in, guess fifteen and seventeen are basically the same. The, the non-exclusive franchise for companies who are seeking to take care of waste? How, how many do we have, Mr. Porter, and what is normal for a city of our size? I know we went through, I think four were approved in the spring and now we've got an additional two. Does this reflect that companies are not able to maintain their business or is this just a burgeoning market of waste haul providers?
John Porter, environmental and solid waste, I think we're, after everything's signed, I think we're up to thirteen or fourteen already, and then these are two more. I think it would be indicative of, of there being more demand out there or at least people see that, that, you know, that this service is needed.
Is, is this normal for a city of our size?
Um, I, I, you know, I know the city of Houston has, I think, over two hundred franchisees, so I don't know, I don't know, that would work out to in, for population of Laredo, but at, at some point, I think you'll start seeing a lot less of these because it's just going to be too competitive, but I, I.
Okay, well, thank you, that, that was my question. I'll, I'll move to close and introduce.
Second? All right. Motion, second?
Wait, wait, wait. Point of order, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, for, these ordinance were all already introduced.
Oh, okay.
So we call for the question?
No, no vote, we just introduce.
Just introduce. All right, noted.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve final reading of ordinances eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Thank you, do hold off on twenty-eight.
That's it, Mr. Mayor, that's my motion.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The number twenty-eight.
Number twenty-eight. Mayor, on twenty-eight, I'd like to read it for the record. All right.
Agenda item twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three dash O dash one eighty-eight, an ordinance of the city of Laredo providing for the adoption of a tax rate of point five three three nine four five per one hundred value. This tax rate will have a maintenance and operation, operation rate of point four one nine zero seven two per one hundred value and an interest and sinking fund rate of point eleven forty-eight seventy-three per one hundred value for a levy and a collection of general, special, addable or taxes for the city of Laredo estimated at one hundred and eight million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars for tax, tax year twenty twenty-three and fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four.
All right, thank you.
And this will require a roll call vote.
Yes, and I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point, zero point five three three nine four five, which is effectively a six point eight six percent increase in the tax rate.
A second?
Motion, second, all in favor?
And it'll be a roll call vote, mayor.
Roll call, okay.
District one in favor or against?
Favor.
District two?
In favor.
District three?
In favor.
District four?
In favor.
District five?
In favor.
District six?
Favor.
District seven?
In favor.
District eight?
In favor.
Motion passes.
Item passes. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no objections from the council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and at this time if there are any objections, I'll take those.
I'd like to pull out item forty-nine, mayor, and have the floor open.
Mayor, for the record, if you could include also supplemental, there's a consent agenda item for the detox.
Forty-four, forty-seven, fifty-four, and fifty-five.
Forty-four, forty-seven, fifty-five? And forty-nine? Fifty-four?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to repeat my motion for purposes of the record. My motion is to approve the consent agenda, including those items of consent agenda in the supplemental, but to exclude for further discussion items number forty-four, number forty-seven, number forty-nine, number fifty-four, number fifty-four. That's my motion.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number forty-four, just starts. Item number forty-four.
Consideration to renew contract FY twenty-two dash zero eight-eight with industrial disposal supplies San Antonio, Texas in an amount of up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of original equipment manufacturer OEM parts and services for the city's street sweepers. All parts will be secured on an as-needed basis. The term of this contract shall be for a period of one year, beginning at the date of its execution and is contingent upon the availability of appropriated funds. There was no price increase during the last extension period. The contract can be renewed to additional one-year extension periods upon mutual agreement of the parties. Funding is available in the fleet maintenance budget. I believe my question was about the original equipment manufacturer parts and services for the street sweeper. Is this, is this part of, what do they call, the buy board or the cooperative agreements that we have?
These all went out for, Honorable Mayor and Councilor Ron Miller, Fleet Management Director. All this is, is for our Timco sweepers. It all went out to bid, it did not, it was not buy board, it was put out and it was, and they bid on it and that's when it came to council, it was approved.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, thank you very much. I'll, I'll move to approve.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number forty-seven?
Consideration to authorize the purchase of the following landscaping equipment for the Max Mandel Golf Course from Landscapes Unlimited LLC in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, and then the list as follows, of, of all these items. And the funding is available in the general fund. And so, Mr. Gomez, Coach Gomez, I wanted to ask, with this equipment, it, it's because it's so extensive, the list, it seems as if there is no existing equipment that's out there at the golf course? Or what am, what am I missing? How, how is it that there's such a, a push to purchase so many new items in, if the golf course has been running and, and functioning all these years?
Okay. Good afternoon, mayor, council. J.J. Gomez Parks, Director for the Record. So, let me give you a little bit of history so you can kind of have an idea and I know Joaquin, I'm going to look over here because he's over there and we've been working with this, with this transition. As you know, back in, a couple of months ago, we changed management company, which is now Trune. Management company currently right now, Landscapes Unlimited is the management company and their contract expires September thirtieth. So what happened was that the, in, about five years ago, four years ago, the Landscapes told the city, "Look, we got all this equipment, so we'll lease it to you, all right? Instead of you all paying seven thousand and some, we'll lease it to you for five thousand five hundred," I want to say around there, because at the time that's when COVID hit, so we, we don't, they were trying to save money, so we, so the, so the Landscapes said, "We got all this equipment and we're going to lease it for you all so y'all can cut down on your costs." Okay, so good deal. Well, here we are, fast forward to twenty twenty-three, and now we are, I guess we're, I don't want to say the word, I guess we're, we're disconnecting ourselves from, from Landscapes and they, they own the equipment. So they say, "Okay, so you're going to let us go, but that equipment belongs to us. So if you want to maintain that, 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 the, the golf course, you guys are going to have, you're more than welcome to buy it from us." Trune, the company, Trune, the current company, the company that's going to be coming in October, all the, all the golf courses that they run is city, the, the city owns the equipment. In this case, saving money back in some years back, we started, we leased it. So now here we go, two weeks from now, they're getting transit and if, and if we don't buy the equipment, then we're not going to have any equipment to maintain the course. Now, as you can see, there is fair, we, we, we did our study, there is fair value, that's about two hundred and forty-eight thousand, I think it is, and for all that equipment. So now when Trune comes in, we purchase it, now it belongs to us. Now, Trune, as a matter of fact, is going to be here on Thursday, so we're going to sit down with them and talk to them, say, "Okay, now, now the equipment belongs to us and we're gonna, you know, they're going to maintain it, they work where it was." So, so all this is not new equipment, this is equipment that has been used, but because of the time and because of the, it's, if we were to order something, it'll be eight months to a year by the time we get something out here. So again, it's fair value, we're not, we, we, we did, we did our homework and it's, 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 it's two hundred and forty-eight thousand for all that equipment that is needed to maintain. two hundred and forty-eight thousand for all the equipment that is needed to maintain the course.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Just a question, Coach. Uh, what would this equipment cost us new, if we were to purchase everything new? And how old are these mowers and everything else you're, uh, purchasing?
Go ahead.
Well, Mayor, if I may, Jose Valdez Junior, Assistant City Manager, and Joaquin also was involved in this. Um, Mr. Rodriguez here, the, with the legal department. The equipment itself, there's different years on certain equipment, but they've been maintaining it. Of course, it was there, so they wanted to make sure they maintained it. And I think that's, uh, what we're gonna address also with Trune, uh, when we meet with them, if everything, if council agrees to purchase us. Um, and, uh, yes, what, uh, Mr. Gomez was saying is correct. Trune has looked at, at the list, have looked at the equipment, and they agree that it's a fair market value. And it's something we need to continue moving on. If not, it's gonna take several, uh, months just to try to acquire some of this equipment, maybe not all of it. And so I think it'll be a lot more expensive if we buy it.
So it's a fair value.
It's a fair value.
What is the value of it being new? Did they, did you all do a study on that or check that out? Because this equipment's old. It, it's older.
It, it's, it's old, Councilmember, but it's been maintained. For example, I know.
I, I understand that, Coach. I understand that.
The rollers and all that thing that are, are up to date, they get, every six months they get serviced.
Do we have a price on what it would cost?
No, I'm not gonna tell you the price, but it, I mean, if you guys can agree with me, it's, it's.
If I may, uh, Councilmember Gutierrez, we did not even consider purchasing new, and the reason being is that it would take between eight to twelve months to get equipment here anyway. And as we know, landscaping a golf course is a daily occurrence.
Is it?
So for us to be able to even think about buying new equipment, which it would be more expensive, right? Here, at least we have an entire fleet being purchased, and then we can replace piecemeal as opposed to going through the big expense. The reason why Trune evaluated this fair market value was because they recently purchased used equipment similar in age for a development that they have in Baytown. And they looked at our numbers and said, "These are very comparable figures to what we've already purchased for, for our development or our course in Baytown." So to answer your question, Councilmember, we did not look at the new price, because to even consider a new, new equipment would take us a long time. We even tried to see if we could lease it from Landscapes. They said, "No." We asked if we can just purchase some of the things. They said, "Take everything, or you take nothing." And the reason why they are in that kind of bargaining position is because there are a bunch of courses that could use this scarce, uh, equipment, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Mayor, item forty-nine, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to, um, note that I had the privilege of serving on this board for the past two years, and it's, it's been an honor to represent the city. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Councilmember Alberto Torres to replace me for the next year.
Second. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, authorizing the city manager to award a, a buy board contract to Utility Service Company in the amount of one million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-five to be paid over a five-year period. USC performed a visual inspection, inspection of all tanks and identified the deficiencies in each water tank. This contract is phase two. The utilities department's plan to fix the deficiencies identified on five water tanks and to bring them into compliance to avoid any TCEQ violations. This contract will be paid over five years. This follows: Year one, three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven. Year two, three hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and two. Year three, three hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and two. Year four, three hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and two. And year five, three hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Funding is available on the Water Works Construction Account. Hello, Mr. Garcia.
Good evening.
I, um, appreciate the fact that you, uh, have provided the, the list of, of the tanks that were identified. I, I think some of the confusion comes in, and we've spoken a little bit about this, is that the two hundred and twenty-one year contract, or the contract from year twenty twenty-one, um, identified eleven tanks.
Correct.
As being part of, of, um, the, I guess, the first phase. Although in the twenty twenty-one language, it wasn't identified as a phase one, but understanding now that that, that was a phase one. So, um, now we've moved on to the next five tanks of sixteen?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So, um, the amount, in, in, um, I, I was explained a little bit about these numbers and, and why they haven't matched up. So you represented that the work is ninety percent done, but looking at the contract, the monies were only fifty percent spent. But it was explained, and, and, and you could fairly explain it, that the work has been done even though the contract payout has been on a different schedule. And so there was a bit of confusion about that.
Okay. For the record, just Arturo Garcia, Utilities Director, and also have Angelica Cantu here, the Operations Manager. I'll let her explain the contract payments.
Okay. So I, I know that the first phase is a five-year contract, and so, um, the work is done at the beginning of the contract, but the payments are spread over five years. So right now, we're getting ready to do the third-year encumbrance, but we cannot, even though they're, let's assume he says ninety percent completed, we cannot pay them ninety percent of the contract because the contract was awarded on a year-by-year basis. So we cannot encumber years four and five yet. We can only encumber one through three. Like, right now, we're gonna start processing year three. So I know that there was a question that, "Why have we only paid them six hundred thousand?" Well, because that's what the contract is worth at this point in time. It's, I think, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand. We cannot ask the contractor to send me a bill. He sends it to us when they're ready to, for us to pay them.
And, and I apologize. Do you mind setting this up and beginning with the, the original twenty twenty-one contract? Just to give some background here, so there's a little more context.
What do you mean, setting it up?
The, so the original contract for the eleven tanks was?
The, the original contract for the eleven tanks was one million, two seventy-one, one eighty. Then we went to, that was back on August the sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. Then we went to council back in April of twenty twenty-two and did an amendment number one for three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that payment was also spread over five years as well. And we had a breakdown of how much we were gonna be charging per year. And so now we're doing phase two, which is five tanks as well, and that one is, I believe, one point seven million dollars. And that one will be divided into five years as well.
Okay, so the original contract was eleven tanks? And this secondary contract for five tanks exceeds the price of the original contract?
But we cannot compare, the eleven that we did the first time had maybe painting, fixing hatches. The work is totally different. These are a little bit more labor-intensive. They're going in there, they do a chemical clean, they do the washouts. It could be, some of these are like thirty foot tall, so you, they gotta go up there. I know, like, the Bota one is, you know, kind of in a little bit disarray, so that one's included in this one as well. You can't say eleven to five, how come it's more expensive? Because the work that it, each tank involves is a little bit different. Every tank is different. It just depends on what the deficiencies were as identified in each one. Some of them were just painting, coating outside at the exterior. Some of them are doing a chemical, like draining the tank, doing a chemical, you know, clean out inside, and then coming back and painting them, putting logos on them. So it really just depends on what the work entails. So if you look at the two bit vendors that provided bids for five, they were almost on par. So it's not as if the work that we're doing right now is, is a little bit off. It's, it's comparable.
So, mm, I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so the, the, the contract that you're recommending to approve is a hundred thousand, um, dollars over the other, the other contract?
It's fifty-two thousand dollars over.
Sorry?
It's fifty-two thousand dollars over.
Sorry, I, I'm, well, it's, it's.
But the, the, the contract that we are recommending is a full maintenance program. It's, it's anything that goes wrong with these tanks, they come back and they, they maintain them. The other contract, the other vendor is only providing a service contract, which means they go in, they do the work that they said they're gonna do, and they're gotten, there, there's, they're only gonna do visual inspections. This is almost kinda like buying an extended warranty on your vehicle to keep it in layman's terms. You buy a vehicle, you get an extended warranty. Anything that happens, it's covered. That, this is a full maintenance program, and this will keep us in compliance with TCEQ.
So the, but so the, the contract that we had before was with Maguire Iron?
That's correct.
And is, uh, did you, were there issues with working with them? Because I believe, well, I.
Well, we, we are currently working with them right now, but they are based out of Chicago, and we've had, recently, we have had some issues where the communication is not there. They had had turnover in staff, so whenever we want, they just show up, they don't communicate with staff. They wanna drain the tanks when it's not feasible for the tanks to be drained. So there are a little bit of issues right now. I mean, nothing major, but there has been some issues with them.
But so.
And, and they're not offering a full maintenance program with the second phase. They're only doing a service contract, meaning they go in, they do the work, and that's it.
Well, I, I do have it in writing that they were, that that wasn't requested from them. And I just find it strange that, um, the gentleman here tonight used to work for Maguire, and now Maguire Iron, and now works for Utility Service Company. And within the, the, the chart that was, or the spreadsheet that was shared on the council communications is misleading, because the contract that you shared with me on Friday, um, adds up to two million, nine hundred and seven, two million, nine hundred and seventy, any, any, um, any eighty-nine dollars over the five-year period.
Okay, the proposals that were attached were provided by staff, but I have been given the master service agreement that has to respect the fee schedule that is on this contract, and that is the one point seven.
This, the fee schedule that's on the contract that you shared with me on Friday is, represents two million dollars over five years.
Okay, then maybe we sent the incorrect attachment to you, but we do have on the agenda item, it is one point seven. Whatever the agi, agenda item reads is what is there. It's the one point seven.
I would, I would, um, request that perhaps we table this item until it's presented correctly.
Can I say a few words, Mayor?
I'll second for discussion.
For, huh, good evening. For the record, Steven Cruz, good mor, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, point of order?
We have a motion.
Yeah, to table, and there's no discussion until there's some vote that either passes or not.
Motion, has it been seconded?
I'll, I'll withdraw, so that we can have the discussion.
We'll continue the discussion.
All right, continue the discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Go ahead.
Um, for the record, my name is Steven Cruz. Um, uh, I guess I'm the individual that Councilmembers are referring to. Um, I have nothing to do whether, who the city awards the contract to, but I am local. Um, in fact, Councilmember Torres, I remember you back in twenty twenty when we were at Sames Arena. I'm a member of South Texas Food Bank, when we were out there distributing over six thousand families. Um, so Councilmember, I have a vested interest here in Laredo. I have family that lives here as well, too. Um, so when you talk about local, I'm probably as local as it gets. Um, I, I can't, I'm not gonna speak to the other company or anything like that. Um, but I will just say that what we are offering you today is a full maintenance program. And what that basically consists of is, for the next five years, we are responsible for your tanks. And you have two tanks that are in that contract that need to be addressed, um, immediately. Um, your staff has done a great job, uh, I commend them, on trying to keep the levels, um, that they should be, so that the citizens get, you know, proper water. Uh, but those tanks do need to be addressed immediately, and I just wanna advise the Council of that. So, um, without any further discussions, if you have any questions as far as tanks, specifications, technical stuff, I'm your guy. Um, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Just, uh, to clarify, is there anything that concerns us that, uh, we would need to table, or is, any other questions?
Chief Lund.
Chief, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure for the public to hear and for the council to hear, if this tabling would, uh, interfere with any of our water quality issues or any of our time-sensitive matters, um, so that we can be very transparent with the council and the public. So what would the effect of the table be for this item?
Well, it's just gonna just delay the process of the maintenance of the tanks.
The, the delay of it, if we wait till the next meeting, it just delays it for another two weeks. But it does affect quality, and there, there is a schedule we're trying to follow, but.
Hi, I'm.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mayor?
Me? Uh, Chief, but I, I guess the, so they're saying it delays it two weeks. What happens in, in two weeks, right, administratively? So this went out on a bid, I'm assuming? It's coming back, or no bid?
This, uh, this is a buy board, uh, contract.
Okay.
Buy board, I, I know there's been a lot of discussion on the council about buy board agreements. Buy board agreements are legal agreements that, that are, that we utilize as a tool for us to do the work that we do as a government. And so ultimately, uh, the, they are legal agreements.
So.
And so because of that, staff went, did the work. I, I think the issue here that we have, that the council needs to be fully aware of, one vendor has limited service compared to the other. The one that we're recommending has additional service, not only the inspections, but the actual work in addition to that. And that's why we're recommending approval of this item, and that's why it's on the agenda. Because it is ready to go, um, for us to proceed with not only the inspection, but the work that needs to be done.
There was my follow-up question, Chief. So it is your recommendation, coming from management, that the item be approved tonight?
It is ready for approval.
And if it were to be tabled, what would happen administratively? You're gonna come back with the same vendor, or?
We would, we would come back, uh, we would meet with staff to see if they, if, if, what further justification could you provide to, to us that we haven't already been told?
Do you think that there's further justification that's needed? I guess is a follow-up question.
I'm okay with it myself, um, the way it's written. And however, I do see the points that are brought up related to, uh, what Councilmember Sigarro is talking about. Basically, um, the, the point that she's, she's making is that, that I'm understanding is that they've, they have already, one of them has the service and the maintenance, and the other one doesn't. What she's saying, what I'm hearing her say, is that the one that doesn't was never asked to do it, correct?
We requested a full maintenance proposal from both of them.
How do we know that they weren't asked?
Well, that's what she's saying. That's what I'm saying.
So how do we know that?
What was requested from the maintenance?
But I also have it in writing that they, that the.
Point of order? Address the chair, please.
Go ahead.
You just also have it in writing that the, the, they submitted a phase-two contract in May. So if this is an emergency, why wait three, four months to bring this to council? I just feel like we keep ending up in the situation of, "Oh, at council, it's an emergency, and we're not doing our due diligence to keep the department accountable for some of these items." And I find, I think that a million-dollar difference is, should, we should table, just to make sure that we have everything correct. There's not a one.
It's not a one-million-dollar difference.
But I have the contract here, and it says that, so for Sierra Vista Tank, the first three-year annual fee shall be one thousand, five hundred, one, one, one fifty-three, um, thousand, three ninety-three per contract year, and year four shall be forty-four thousand. And that's not, that is not what is presented in what the, you, the department presented in the commu, the council communications.
For, for the record.
And is this the same for every tank?
I'm sorry, what was the question? I'm not understanding.
Well, it wasn't a question, it's a statement.
Okay, what was the statement? I'm sorry.
That in the contract, so I'm using Vista, the Sierra Vista Tank. And here it says the contract price, annual fees. The asset shall receive an exterior renovation per the scope of work prior to the end of contract year one. The first three annual fees shall, uh, years shall be.
So, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I know, I know what you're reading now. I'm looking at it right now. And that's not the master service agreement, ma'am, so I think you have the wrong information, for the record. Um, the information that's accurate is actually the master service agreement, which, I don't know if you wanna provide her that information. Um, and it's also that breakdown, that table, that Excel spreadsheet that gives the breakdown of the costs, which should equal to about one point seven million dollars, if I'm correct. Um, so, uh, I think you have the wrong, uh, information, ma'am. Uh, not to be disrespect, disrespectful, but, uh, uh, the information you have is, I think, inaccurate. It's actually the information that the director has right here.
And, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, in, in numerous discussions with the city manager and the executive team, city managers made it very clear to us, that's his team, that he wants to take a step back and have me work directly with the utilities department, so that these items that continue to be brought before council. so that these items that continue to be brought before council can be worked through, and we could prevent these rushed, the, the, the feeling of being rushed into making a decision. We don't want council to feel that way. However, we do want to make sure that their vision is laid out as to the plan that they have to do the maintenance to keep the water at this superior quality. Uh, so we are talking about these change orders. These are discussions that we're having with the city manager and the team. We don't want to see these large numbers just changing and then making you all feel rushed into it because it's, it's an uncomfortable feeling for all of us when we, when we have this stuff happen. So we're going to be working closer with utilities to prevent the feeling that you're bringing forward. But this item, as prepared and as delivered to you today, is ready for approval.
And I also want to add to that as well, too, because we were also requested, I guess, a quote, I wasn't directly, but the company I worked for was back in May, June, ma'am. And we also felt the same urgency as, hey, because in speaking with some of your staff, they have, they're saying, hey, this needs to get fixed as soon as possible. We don't want an issue to happen and affect the community. So yes, the urgency is there, ma'am, and I, I understand what you're saying, why it took so long here. But I'm understanding now, it's because the city was trying to do their due diligence in ensuring they had the right information. So I'm assuming that's why the time lapse is where we are, where we are.
Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, as a customer for South Laredo, I know the Sierra Vista, uh, tanks are running on very low water pressure. Uh, if we table this item like Councilor Sigarro says, doesn't that, doesn't help, that doesn't, don't we need the maintenance in order for that low water pressure to at least start getting resolved?
Yes, ma'am.
But it doesn't make sense.
It, it's, the longer you delay, you're just pushing the can down the road.
And to my colleagues, I just want to make it clear, um, about three, four weeks ago, I received a call with about three or four residents where people need to shower at a certain time because the waters, the water pressure and the water is so, so low that they cannot get to have a full shower, or the kids need to go somewhere else to take a shower, and that's unacceptable.
And if I may, um, what we also are seeing here at this meeting is that there's a breakdown of information, that the council member may not have the exact same information that the, that the utilities department put into the package. So there, there's a concern there, uh, that's being shown here tonight.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
I just, so again, we've been over this for eight months, and why, I mean, I had to request these, the contracts and the bids, and because they weren't, they weren't provided in the council communications, and then now you're telling me you've sent me the wrong one? I, I would, I would still appreciate if we could, um, motion to table the item to verify the costs involved.
Mayor, mayor?
Go ahead, council.
And, uh, you know, uh-
Motion dies, ma'am, for lack of second point of order, we're going to continue discussion.
Yeah, go ahead and finish up, yeah.
Um, uh, Mr. Cruz-
Yes, ma'am.
Talking about the need of, for urgency now isn't helpful to the discussion to find out what's going on. I think, and, and, and that's the only comment I, I wanted to make to you. I mean, we're trying to provide due diligence for the city because we're talking about one point seven million dollars. I mean, it is a significant amount of money, and we want to make sure that city taxpayers are being well spent.
Yes.
Doctor, uh, Dr. Garcia, that, and I, I just want to explain a little bit of the confusion. It's tied to a 2021 contract that was for eleven tanks.
Correct.
And now you're coming back with five tanks. It was a five-year project in 2021, and now, two years later, we're going out with one point seven million dollars again. It wasn't made clear that the eleven tanks were separate from these five tanks. When I read the item, I made the assumption that you're talking about extra money for the five tanks within that eleven-tank contract, partly because of the timing and partly because of the wording. So, you know, we, we did try to find out information today so that we would have a better understanding and not have this long conversation at council, but we weren't able to find out all the information. So I, it, this is not meant to be, um, a controversial disagreement. This is just because we're not getting the information that we need to be able to process all of this and make sure that the contracts are being put out, um, in a responsible way.
Understood. I understand, and we'll, we'll make every effort to get to the correct information and the proper information. And please, come talk to me or my staff so we can clarify these issues. But I appreciate it, and all I'm trying to do is maintain and reach that superior water quality.
Of course, but I, um, I think we need to, uh, calm a little bit of the hair-on-fire type of comments because they're not helpful.
Okay.
Really, we're just trying to find out enough information to be able to make an informed decision.
Okay, understood. And Mr. Ma, and Mr. Mayor, we are committed to working through, uh, these, uh, future agenda items to minimize confusion, to be very clear, to minimize, uh, change orders, uh, to go out and, and, and rebid versus adding on to others. Because we hear what the council is saying, it's creating confusion, and we want to minimize that confusion. And so ultimately, I just wanted to report that to you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
And so I don't, I think what we're talking about here is just like a, a budgeting issue, you know, not, these things might come up, but it's, if we pass a budget for a certain amount, and then it doesn't, and then we require a change order, it's, throws a wrench into everything because we already had a balanced budget. And so now we're going to have to pull from somewhere else to balance again, and it's not good practices to be under-presenting the need and then later on asking for more. I mean, we're, we're kind of working through this type of stuff. So I, I don't know if that's kind of like what's been going on, or if it's just supply chain issues or what, but I think the confusion comes with the numbers and discrepancies. And, um, I definitely don't want to get into a situation where, you know, we've had issues where, um, we've needed equipment and we don't want to be without if we do need it because at that point, it's going to be, we're not going to be able to provide water to the, to the public. It's hard for me to discern which of those items are emergencies and which ones aren't. And it seems like all of them are, are important. Um, I definitely want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, but at the same time, if management is suggesting that it's ready for approval, I think the responsibility ultimately falls on them to present something to us that is, and the accountability would lie with management for recommending something that wasn't ready to be approved. Those are my comments, Mayor.
All right, any other comment? Motion or anything?
Well, I mean, I-
There was no second on that, so I think it died.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second?
So I'd also like to, ma, Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
I'd also, just for the record, and whether it pertains to this, um, well, just for the record, um, Mr. Cruz, you also had another item on the agenda tonight that was for CB thirteen, the CB thirteen hauling that was tabled at the last meeting. It was put back on this agenda item, and with the amended agenda, it was pulled off because there's the, the, it's, it hadn't been fully vetted, um, like the utilities department had written on the item. And I believe you also work for precision pumps?
No, ma'am.
Well, you used to.
Um, like three years, two years ago.
Okay, just because I saw that on, on a, a recent document, so I-
Ma'am, for the record, I don't know where you're getting your information, but a lot of it's inaccurate, and-
It's all open rec, records.
I'm a, I don't work for, uh, a public entity, so it's not open records, ma'am.
No, the documents are on-
If you want, we can address these things on a one-on-one basis with the meeting. Um, but I find this unprofessional, and I find it very, it's, it's just not professional, ma'am, as a council member. Um, so if you want, we can address these things on a one-on-one basis. I'd be more than willing to. I'm going to be here for the week. Like I said, I have family that lives here, so I'm not going anywhere. Um, I can talk to you on a one-on-one basis if you want.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, point of order, this is irrelevant, I'd like to make a motion to call for the question.
Motion, and we have a second already.
Yes.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One opposed.
One. Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, for item number fifty-six, the auditor is approaching, so we'll wait for it.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, for the record, Tina Rodriguez, internal auditor.
Go ahead.
I'm just here for your approval of the proposed fiscal year 2024 annual audit plan that was submitted to you on this Friday's packet.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item? Number fifty-seven.
Good evening, Mayor, council, uh, for the record, Arturo Garcia, utilities director. This is the water quality presentation. Currently, we're still in stage two. Water conservation. Currently, our MISTAD is at thirty-four point four. And also our chlorine residuals are maintaining, water quality is good for nitrite, nitrates, pneumonia. And also, I'd like to report on the other water quality programs that we're doing. One of them is the cross-connection control. This is the backflow prevention devices that we currently manage and maintain. We have over six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight assemblies that we manage and control to improve the water quality. This is to avoid cross-contamination from sources outside of our distribution system. And currently, we had a hundred and eighty-seven new assemblies just currently in this year. Other one is the waterline replacement, which we've done. Uh, about fifteen hundred feet of six-inch water through sixteen-inch on Muir Street, uh, one thousand two hundred and twenty feet of eight-inch waterline on Grant, two hundred and eighty feet of twelve-inch, and twenty feet of sixteen-inch on Victoria. These are the waterline replacements, and those, that work is continuing. The other one is the looping of mains, those are projects currently that I still am putting together for you. Some of these are under design, and some of them are getting ready to start construction. And I'll bring that at your next meeting, the different projects that we're doing for looping. Pressure regulating valves, those are valves that we have throughout the system that are being maintained, maintenance. There are sixteen site locations. And then our sl, our flushing program with over fifty, uh, automatic flushing devices that we maintain and operate daily. That's all I have to report, and we're currently, again, maintaining good water quality.
All right, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
We are at stage two of the water conserva, conservation. Are we doing any enforcement?
Yes, we are doing enforcement. We have been issuing notices and, and citations. Uh, we did give a ten-day grace period, uh, people are receptive. We're also providing public education. We are running ads to promote the education of the, uh, water conservation. And, uh, it's one that people are adhering to it, and it's just a matter of identifying the locations.
And the citation would be what?
Typically, citation is for five hundred dollars.
Any citations given up to now?
Yes, I, I believe we've given about, let me check my notes here. I'm sorry, I didn't give that detail. We've issued twenty-five warnings. And I think we've had two or three citations that we, uh, have identified here. But our efforts are to try to work with people, but again, we will issue citations for those that don't follow the rules.
And is that, uh, citation coming out in the water bill, or is it?
No, it's, it's a separate fine from the bill.
Separate fine.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
The waterline replacement program there, um, you're listing the ones that, that you all are working on right now. Um, do you have like a project sheet that shows, because I know we, remember when we had this issue, we bonded out for, for the water replacement. Do you have a, a, like a document that shows what the needs are and then what has been worked on so we can kind of get a, like a, an idea of how we're progressing as far as the goal goes? Because I know we're going to have to bond out later on to do more.
Yes, and that's what I'm working on to put together, to identify the downtown area replacements and the new projects that's coming in. And I'm breaking them down by transmission and distribution mains in the different neighborhoods because there's different areas that, uh, what I'm doing is assessing where I have the weakest areas to address those immediate areas first and then program them out. But I do have that that I'm going to be bringing to you.
Well, like a progress report as far as, you know, I, what you're doing, but then also what else needs to be done just so we can, just so we can all be-
Yes, I'll, I'll-
Up to date with that program.
I'll bring that to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Any motion for executive session? Or you want to stay?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to make a mo, a motion for executive, to enter into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-point-zero-seven-one, one A to consult with legal counsel concerning Tony Moreno versus City of Laredo and the Laredo Municipal Civil Service Commission and any other matters incident. There are two, to include legal, management, and anyone else they deem appropriate.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Executive session. Back to regular session, nine forty-two PM.
Mr. Mayor, um, for item number fifty-eight, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the, uh, city attorney, uh, to proceed accordingly, um, as authorized and further authorizing the city manager and the mayor to sign any and all relevant documents as needed.
Second.
Second.
Aye. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recess as the Laredo City Council and convene as the Laredo Mass Transit Board.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number fifty-nine.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn as the Laredo Mass Transit Board and reconvene as the Laredo City Council.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Sixty-B.
Discussion with possible action to amend ordinance twenty nineteen dash O dash one-one-one for voluntary committee members and retract the years of service portion as they are willing to volunteer their time. This would address a problem of vacant positions. In committees established, members can help with experience, knowledge, and stability for City of Laredo committees. Mayor, so I'd like to make a motion to amend this ordinance as the ordinance and the charter contradicts.
All right, I, I just have one question. Do we have enough people applying for these, uh?
Unfortunately, we don't, Mayor.
So the request is to give a term, a term time for these people? Or not give a-
No, to not, to, to remove the, the term limit that this, that this, uh-
Okay.
Ordinance has.
All right, okay. Councilwoman?
Uh, regarding term limits for council, uh, for committees, I feel in particular the municipal civil service commission, the ethics commission, and the planning and zoning committee should re, retain term limits. I think when we have volunteers serving on those particular committees and they're long-term, it breeds an environment that could be subject to corruption. That is in no way suggesting that anyone serving or anyone wishing to serve longer than two terms on these committees. I am not impugning anyone. But when you think about the importance of these committees, planning and zoning impacts land use in Laredo for decades. Um, the ethics commission, we're demanding ethical behavior and that they see and hold members in the city, or employees of the City of Laredo to account for ethical behavior. And then with municipal service commission, the decisions they make impact people's employment. If we do not have term limits, then there is, um, there could be possible influencing of these members because the suggestion is we know who they are, they're identified in our community. We know they're going to be there long-term, and that they hold a lot of power for incredible- We know they're gonna be there long term and that they hold a lot of power for incredibly important decisions of the city. So I appreciate the desire to keep experience on our committees and volunteers serving on these committees. The ones who have the most passion frankly are the ones who serve the best and the longest. But these three committees in particular are so sensitive and so impactful that I really feel like term limits is the best way so that we prevent any type of corruption and we also prevent the perception of that. And I just want to again be clear, I do not mean to imply that anyone right now currently serving is, is in any way acting inappropriately. But as council, we need to ensure that the best environment exists so that we can prevent corruption and the perception of corruption for the public.
Mayor, I just want to clarify that it's not a long term as this volunteers only serve the moment the city council member appoints them to. So it's not a long, it's not a long term appointment as well, that certain council member is there in that seat at the moment. Just for clarification purposes.
Any other comment?
Mayor, was there a second for this motion?
Do we have a motion?
I second the motion.
Okay.
And for clarification, Mayor and council member, you cited ordinance twenty nineteen oh one-one-one, but there is also a previous ordinance twenty seventeen oh zero-two-zero that also speaks to the eight-year term limit. So I just wanted to make sure we understand your, your motion. Is it to do away with the eight-year maximum period? And but there's also a sixteen-year maximum for serving on any committee in aggregate? So you can have like two years, one year, and so forth, no more than eight years on one committee and no more than sixteen years on any committee? If that's what you want to amend.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Go ahead.
I think, and I don't know what Councilmember Rodriguez's intention is, but I think that the sixteen-year, I think, sounds like ample time, so I would say that maybe the sixteen-year cap on any committee would, I would say, does it make sense how there's a lot of contradiction here, eight years, sixteen years? Charter says the term of the council member. So I think that sixteen is a good compromise to leave that there, eliminate the eight, right? But leave the sixteen and you can't serve for sixteen years in total during your lifespan, so it's like
Well, Mayor.
something
Go ahead.
Just to add to the sixteen number, because, you know, if a council member can serve maximum of eight years, but a council member could also be elected as mayor and potentially serve the city as sixteen years, so if I had a, if I was gonna run for mayor, if I was to win or whatever, or any other council member, or a mayor can run for council and serve sixteen years, you would make sense that you would want your trusted appointees to be able to follow the charter, which basically says that they can serve the length of your term. So I, I think that's, I think a good justification for that sixteen-year. Just
Any other comment?
Yeah, just, just thank you, Mayor. To follow that example, it's eight years for council member, eight years for mayor, so a total of sixteen. But that's still eight years on any one given position, so Zone, if you could clarify, ordinance twenty nineteen oh one-one-one that's mentioned in the agenda item, that states that any one individual has a maximum of eight years per committee, per person?
Yes.
On all of our committees and boards, not, not just the ones Councilmember Melissa mentioned. It's referring to all of them.
Yes, and then sixteen years total on any service. That's the priorities and procedures handbook, but prior to that, twenty seventeen oh, oh, sorry, oh, zero-two-zero council had passed an ordinance that capped service on any one committee to eight years, so I believe this motion would, should encompass both of those, just for the spirit of it, that way you have to come back and change the second.
Yeah, so just for the record, I'll just have my position on the table that I, I think we should keep it the way it is with a maximum of eight years per person, per committee, just like with council, eight years, you can serve eight years on council, and then if you want to be mayor, you can serve eight years as mayor, but you can't serve more than eight years for either one, so that's, I think we should keep it the same and keep it where it is.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll offer then the amendment to comply with what our legal team is mentioning to also include the ordinance that also ties into this in the motion that Councilmember Rodriguez has made. That's my amendment.
Amendment to a motion.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Zone, in looking at the twenty seventeen zero, or O dash zero-two-zero, eight-year cap, was there any explanation or discussion about why council at that time decided to put the eight-year cap on?
There was no real explanation besides just the fact that, it's just an aggregate, because the charter says that this appointee serves along with your, your term as a council member, but what occurs is that an individual gets appointed by several council members and then those years add up to beyond eight years, so the idea is to not have one person serve on one committee for longer than eight years, even though there might be breaks in between, and no more than sixteen years total, and, and three, two years later, it was memorialized in the priorities and procedures handbook, so it was, it was councils wished twice to impose this, this limit. And, and I don't see it contradictory, I mean, they're, they're both laws in the books and I wanted to find a way to to interpret to make them consistent with the charter, so it's good that you all review it and you all decide whether to keep it or not keep it.
Uh, Mayor, really quick. Uh, really quick, so today I, I appointed, and I appreciate council support, Mr. Montemayor on the drug and alcohol, I know he served prior terms, and he does this with a passion, would this affect his appointment or would not?
If it's the same committee, then the eight years would have to, to be counted. If it's on any committee, then it's up to sixteen years. So Yes.
It would be affect, he would be affected?
To not serve.
Huh?
To not serve.
To not serve.
Mayor, may?
If he's been there for eight years, yes.
Right, so, Councilmember Gonzalez, that's an example how, you know, committees that are very specific and deal with social issues, of which we have many, or a different type of purview, where those committees contribute to the discussion of ordinances and what we consider here, but they do not make policy. I feel like, again, the municipal civil service commission, the ethics commission, and the planning and zoning impact policy and ordinances when we're talking about land use, and they're just a different category, they're very sensitive. And again, I just feel like the limits make sense.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
In that spirit, as far as like committees that are important and make decisions, I mean, we also don't have requirements for the people that we appoint to these committees. For example, if they're, planning and zoning is making land use policy, but they could literally have no experience with any of that, and they're making decisions on what can and can't be built all around our city. So if we really want to reform these committees and like hold them to certain standards, it would also behoove us to look at their, you know, the requirements for appointing them, which we do, do not have. And we do have our ethics, all of our committee members are held to ethical standards, just like we are. And if there's a question on their appointment, they can always be removed. And it's hard for us to find people to serve in the first place. I have several committees that are unfilled because you can't be related to the person appointing you, you can't work for the city. You know, there's all these criteria of why you can't serve, but there's people in our community that are willing to do these, serve on these boards voluntarily, and then to be denied just because they've run out their term when they still have more value to add. That is a concern that I have with, with being too stringent, and as far as I know, our, our committee policy, what I, what I heard is that we have a very stringent set of rules in that regard that, about as far as like putting a time limit that other communities don't, don't have.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So I accept my Councilmember Torres's amendment to the sixteen years, but I would also like to amend that one, and for all those saying corruption, I'd like to add to the motion for all committee members in the ethics, civil service, and planning and zoning to do voluntary drug tests to fight this opposed corruption and be more transparent so all volunteers can be clean of mind and body.
I believe that's outside the scope of this agenda item, though. Were you talking about drug testing, Councilmember?
Those three, I mean, if those three committees are, they're saying there is, it's gonna be corruption and they're not being transparent, then it's be transparent as throughout the, throughout the table, and, and I mean, if we do it, if we volunteer to do it, why don't we ask them to volunteer as well?
No, I hear you, Councilmember, but that's not in this item, so I'm trying to keep it within the spirit of this item. I believe it was about the, the term limits, that's why we added the twenty seventeen ordinance and Joe Valdez, our assistant city manager, brought it to our attention that, you know, some of these other commissions may have
An ordinance applies to it specifically, right?
Specifically, so maybe we can expand in this motion to, to deal with term limits on any of these commissions, committees, and boards, but as far as drug testing, that needs to be a different item.
In the following, in the, in the following
That needs to be a separate item, just to be clear.
Then I, I accept Councilmember Torres's amendment to do the sixteen years.
Mayor, may I?
Term limit.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
So I believe that term limits are important, that way we give more people in the, in the community the opportunity to serve. I do think that the three committees that we are talking about are well attended and it's, we have many others that we've asked management on countless occasions to please review our committees to see how many have been, have, have it, how many are, are, you know, mequorum, don't, you know, or, or not? We, we still haven't received a comprehensive response, and I would like to suggest that perhaps instead of voting on this tonight, that we do request that management have, and look at all of our committees comprehensively and, and bring back something that we could all agree on, but I, and I, I believe that there are a lot of the other committees that we, we find that don't meet quorum because they don't have a purpose, and there, we have city liaisons that don't value our, the, the time of our, our residents that serve on, on these committees, and I've even heard that you have liaisons from the city that just say, oh, well, you can vote on what you want, but council at the end of the day is gonna, is gonna do what they want, and well, I don't think that that serves anybody very, and, and so they, they, I would just request that we table this item for now, if possible.
All right, any motions?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, I believe that'd be a good idea, that way we can selectively see, because I would get hit with two or three in the Port Advisory Committee also, and in the Suicide, so I would see if, if maybe we can revisit this and make sure what, what, uh, you know, what we do here, because what we vote tonight, it's, it's gonna just, you know, change ordinance or, and, you know, we're gonna be selectively.
Mayor, in that, in that case, I'd like to motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion.
This is second by
And a second?
Well, Mayor, before, I mean, all that
Well, there's no discussion, and
We already have a motion and a second.
To table.
To table. All in favor? Opposed? One, two, three. So it was, you decided. Oh, tiebreaker. Okay.
Was it four or three, I'm sorry?
Table. Mayor Gonzalez, you voted to table the item, correct?
To revisit, two weeks.
Three, four. And what does the mayor, to table or not to table? How many, four to table? Four to table, four not to table. Table. Motion to table.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is item D one. It's discussion with possible action to establish policy code for thrift store, nonprofit donation bins, and any other matters incident thereto. Mr. Mayor, for this item, I've received complaints from business owners that have essentially allowed voluntarily, right, to help the different causes, these donation bins that we see in business parking lots. I'm sure that we've all seen at one point or another that there's bags all over the place, there's overstuffing of the bins, and the business owners are coming to us, or at least to me, to make several points. One, these nonprofits are not picking up the items timely. Number two, they've allowed them voluntarily on private property, and they have no way of reaching these people because they don't get back to them. Now they're coming to us and asking, can you come and haul all this trash, right, which donations turn into trash because they were, the bin was either left open because of overstuffing, bags or items were left all around, or there's also complaints from business owners that there's individuals who are just watching to see what's being dropped off so that they can go and pull it out and sell it at garage sales or at the flea market. So they're creating a nuisance because of the lack of attention by the nonprofits providing these bins. So I want to see what other cities are doing to regulate these type of bins, I understand they're put in private property, but maybe regulating them the same way we regulate your trash bins, right, through like Trash Co. or Southern, those big green or blue bins, which I'm sure there's some sort of ordinance that requires that they must be up kept or maintained. So I'd like to make a motion to have management bring back proposals and ideas as to how we can address this. Maybe asking for permits to place these bins so we can keep an inventory. I don't know, obviously, the business owners don't want to be cited for the, the trash that's being created when they feel they were doing a, a, a good service to the community and the nonprofit by placing those bins, and they feel that they're responsible, some owners have told me at convenience stores that code has showed up and have told them, you all need to clean this up, and so it puts the business owner in a difficult position. I feel it puts us all in a difficult position as well, because the least thing we'd want to do is create that extra hurdle for a nonprofit to operate, especially if they're accepting donations, but I've come to learn in the little research I've done that a lot of these nonprofits do it to sell these items at thrift stores, right? So there's obviously profit being made for whatever nonprofit purpose, but there's operational money that they're generating, and the least they can do is upkeep these bins in our community. So I want management to come back with a proposal, with options, based on what other cities are doing to handle this. I think there's a second time I've put this item on the agenda, not with recent administration, but throughout, and I think that's why there's an existing ordinance or something about doing some sort of permitting, Mr. Hickel, is there anything already in the books? No? So I think we've just fell in the bag burner, but if we could bring it back, that's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll, I'll second, Mayor, I'd like to add.
Motion second, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to add that some of these don't just pop up on private businesses, some of them are on our right of ways, so I think we'd need to include some regulation on that, like you'll go in, for example, on Verde Road going into Green Ranch, there's like a bin set up there on the side of the road, and I don't, I don't know who put it there or what, but I don't think we should just allow these popping up on our right of way.
Mr. Mayor, we'll, we'll assign that to Mr. Hickel, and we'll come back with some recommendations.
All right, thank you.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Private businesses are asked to put these up. Are they able to deny that?
Absolutely.
Just, just so the public knows.
Yeah, yeah, and the situation, just to add to that, is that they're allowing them right out of goodwill, and then apparently there's no follow-up from the nonprofits to. All right, that's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion, any second?
Uh, Mayor, really quick.
I seconded it, Mayor.
I'm in second, go ahead.
Thank Councilmember Torres for putting this item, I know I was dealing with Mr. Hickel on, on one of these exact issues where there was these bins creating a lot of nuisance, and then, so we were just hitting on walls, we didn't know where, who it belonged to until I found out that it was a, a national nonprofit organization that had just, you know, gone obsolete or, or did not exist anymore, so, yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Hickel, thank you for getting back, and and let's see how we tackle these, this issue throughout our city as well. Thank you, Torres.
Thank you. Motion has been made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Mayor, item sixty E one. Discussion with possible action to instruct city manager to authorize staff install speed humps at the following locations where deemed necessary, under the special provisions of the speed hump installation policy, and to authorize the use of asphalt-type speed humps instead of speed cushions, which is currently required under the policy, and any amendments thereto. City Council District Five, credit funds will be used for this project. Uh, there's an amendment on that First Street Crown hood, it's Uh, there's a, an amendment on that First Street Crown Hood. It's Crown Wood, Crown Wood Drive and Mahogany Court. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion second.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, councilmember Gutierrez, do you know if the, the asphalt type speed humps instead of the speed cushions? Um, I know Mister Orfila made a comment about, um, certain kind of speed hump that, that drives in some type of screw into the asphalt and then possibly allows water to get in. And that's the cause of a lot of damage to the streets. Do you know the difference? I, I do not.
Right, that's why we're staying away from the speed cushion because those do drive nails into it. The asphalt just goes right over it.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Motion second?
Motion sec- and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes.
Um, yeah.
It's, uh, item F, letter F.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'm actually, uh, gonna be tabling my item. We had a good discussion with directors before the meeting and, yeah.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item G.
Item G one. Discussion with possible action to support the Laredo Veteran Affairs Committee by incorporating an interactive community calendar to their website and any other matters incident thereto. Council, co-sponsored by councilmember Elisa Cigarroa. Um, this came out of the Veteran Affairs Committee meeting. They were requesting an interactive calendar. I know that it's since been, um, placed on the website. I know Mister Valdez had it, had it done. Um, the only thing missing from there that I see is that the veterans had requested an option to upload items. Um, so I think just need some clarification to that, but, uh, want the veterans just be able to support them because they have a lot of events going on and it's good to have everything all in, in one location. I don't know if councilmember Cigarroa wants to add.
I believe you covered it.
You got it? Okay, okay. So, um, I don't think we need action on this item, but I'll just go ahead and solidify it in the record with the motion.
Second.
Yeah, motion second. Did you have a question?
I was just gonna make a comment, mayor, um, that, yeah, we were trying to work on it, uh, but with the new system that we're having, sometimes we have some issues and, but our, uh, Caloramis, our tech was able to figure some of it out. And so if we have any issues, we'll advise council of that, but we'll be trying to, uh, up, upload any, any other concerns or addressing the other concerns that mayor Pro Temp or any of the council members have with that item.
Great.
All right, thank you. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table item two and three.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Letter H.
So dis- discussion with possible action to reprioritize Vision Zero planning and initiatives in an effort to eliminate traffic deaths along, along with evaluating existing ordinances, policies and procedures related to school zone safety and any other matters incident thereto. Co-sponsored by councilmember Melissa Cigarroa and councilmember Doctor Tyler King. And, yes, that, um, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion and second.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Um, I was, uh, very happy to co-sponsor this item because I think, you know, Vision Zero planning can allow us to refocus on the schools and Mister Penya, I'm, uh, sorry to, to give you more work, but could, could the city come in and evaluate all of our schools and, um, crossing issues that we may have? I know in my district, um, I've got a, a school on a very busy street. And right now there's a police officer who's assisting kids in, in the morning and the afternoon. But, um, I'm not sure what kind of plans there are for when that police officer can't be there or for kids who are stragglers and, and don't make that crossing when somebody's assisting it. And it's next to a very busy street. You, there aren't enough lights. There don't seem to be enough painted crosswalks. If you could do, if, if the city could do an evaluation and make sure we're prioritizing Vision Zero and if there's any, you know, if you need to reach out to councilmembers for assistance with upgrading the safety features around our schools. I don't know if we do this in addition, you know, in, um, collaboration with our school districts. But, um, this focus for Vision Zero seems like a very good one.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to add to councilmember's comment, I think it would probably be better for us to give them suggestions on, if, if we have some in addition, just to kind of help them, uh, since they have to cover the whole city, it might take a while. So I don't really anticipate that they would really be reaching out to us. I think it would probably be better for us to say, this is where, I, I know I did that recently on a, on an inter- industrial area, but I, I do have some suggestions that I will be definitely adding to your list.
Mister mayor, may I make a comment?
Go ahead.
So I think that also what needs to be incorporated, chief, um, with this Vision Zero is also, uh, the education or I guess the enforcement of target areas where we've seen major fatalities, right? Um, for example, um, in councilmember Gonzalez's district, um, which are mainly a lot of the Tex dot roads, right? Where, because of sometimes weather conditions or whatnot, we've recently just saw that, uh, several fa- fatalities that also involved, um, children unfortunately. So I think that, yes, it's important that we target the schools, but that we also target the areas, um, where there's high traffic. Um, I don't want to use the word motivation, but maybe that witness to maybe speed because you're on a loop. You're on, um, maybe, uh, what, what is it?
Cuatro Vientos.
Cuatro Vientos, um, on thirty-five, right? I know we had fatalities a lot on, um, Babulug, uh, Tam U area, northeast Babulug. So Zapata Highway, Jaime Zapata, all those areas, right, which encompass the, the outer loop where we probably have a lot of speeders that can also cause a fatality and focus on exactly not just the schools, but also the higher fatalities that we have in these areas where we maybe depend on DPS or Tex dot, I don't know, because they're Tex dot roads, we're able to go in there. But I think that that should be a target area as well for this Vision Zero because we zero in, right, into the communities, into the areas where we see children walk to and from school. But what we forget is that there's also bus stops, right, and, and runners and bikers in all these areas that can also, um, you know, lose their life because of a, of a speeding driver who's not respecting the, the speed limits, right? So can that be incorporated in this or is this outside the scope of Vision Zero? Or is Vision Zero more sidewalks respecting pedestrians?
Good evening, Robert Penya, Traffic Safety Department. So we work very closely with Tex dot and, and I'll get to the schools in a bit. So Tex dot has a road to Zero, which is essentially the same as Vision Zero. And so, um, I guess as recent as last week, uh, we met with Tex dot. Um, and I had staff visit with them and they visit fatality locations and they review the situation, uh, for improvements. And they do that regularly and, and we're gonna do the same for the city. So we have on-system roadways which belong to the state. And they, they pretty much responsible for those and all the off-system or our roadways, which, which we're going to evaluate ourselves. And we do that on a regular basis. So we have a, a citywide map of all the crash data. And, and we pull that regularly from the state database, uh, for evaluation purposes. So we, we know where all the fatalities are. We know where all the serious injuries are. So a lot of what we do is buy the numbers, uh, working with a, with the data. Uh, so the schools, we, we pretty much would like to think that we've addressed a lot of the safety concerns from the get-go at the time the school is developed. And we, we establish those school zones, uh, from that, from that point on. But of course, you know, we do get those, uh, requests to revisit and, and we like to take them on, on a case-by-case basis. So.
Well, I, I wanted to have a follow-up, mayor, if I may briefly before I yield to council, to mayor Pro Temp. So, uh, again, I, I think you, you hit the nail right on the head, right, where I think the schools are under control. I left Mines Road area out and then also in inner city Saunders, fifty-nine, Clark, right? Uh, I get calls from residents that live there where people just speed twenty miles, fifteen miles over the speeding limit and they disregard, right, because of, of how the, the spread is on boulevards and loops. But you, you mentioned Tex dot and Tex dot's, um, I guess approach sometimes is let's, do we have justification to place a traffic light on the loop, right? Which you hear a lot of people then mention, well, then what's the whole point of a loop if now you're putting a traffic light right in the middle of it, right? So before we get to that and if a traffic light is needed, by all means, get it done, Tex dot, if it's gonna save a life. But my purpose to directing, um, Chief Lundin was we need to, in my opinion, up the enforcement chief on the speeding, especially on the loop. Um, I know that previously they would put dummy units, right, to kind of divert the speeders, um, especially northeast Babulug, by the university, all those areas. But I think people have caught on to it, right? Um, that, oh, it's, no one's in the car. It's okay, right? So maybe either a task force of some sort, um, of traffic, um, motorcycle units and just, people will start seeing, um, speeders be pulled over to the point to where I've seen on Facebook, people take a picture and beware, right? They're pulling people over on Saunders. Beware, they're pulling people over on Guadalupe or Chihuahua or the Loop or wherever it may be. And that seems to be more effective than putting a dum- a dummy vehicle on the loop, in my opinion, right? Actual enforcement, which seems to be the solution to many other problems, all the way from code to something like this, right? And if this is going to save a life, then I think we need to up it there. I don't know if you have already done under your leadership with the police department, but I think that we need to do a little bit more so that it could divert, right, and have people think twice.
Yes, uh, Mister mayor, yes, we, we've, uh, initiated some strategies, uh, related to that. We did do the dummy vehicles and we did, uh, have some target enforcement along the loop with our traffic directed patrol units, motorcycle units and, and patrol vehicles as well. In addition to that, um, the education is very important. Uh, just, uh, just, uh, two weeks ago, we arrested a speeder on the loop and we plastered it all over social media. Like, uh, councilmember Torres was saying, it's not till they start seeing this on social media that they'll react, uh, differently.
How much over the limit was that driver going?
I, I, I don't recall, uh, councilmember, how much over the limit it was. But we did end up, uh, it was, uh, we placed it on social media that that occurred. Uh, another thing that, uh, I wanted to touch on related to the, uh, enforcement, uh, on the education is we're gonna, uh, try to bring back Shattered Dreams. Shattered Dreams was a very popular program that we would use to the schools to educate on that sense as well. And, uh, additional strategies, uh, Captain Jerry Gonzalez from directed patrol came up with a strategy of peak hours based on, uh, incidents occurring and which Chief Rodriguez tasked him with that assignment recently. And so that strategy is gonna be rolled out here pretty soon. And, uh, they rolled it out one day this weekend and it was very successful on the number of citations that occurred. And so we're, and one last point, if I may, Mister mayor. I have had two conversations with the director of DPS, Colonel McCraw, director Stephen McCraw, to ask him to saturate the loop from thirty-five all the way to the south, uh, with DPS units. He committed to that. We haven't seen it happen. I followed up with another phone call and, uh, I know Chief Rodriguez will be working with a local captain of DPS to try to continue to push that message to increase, uh, DPS units along the loop.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Yes, I know we also talked about this at the MPO, um, with the whole like speedings, particularly, um, the fatalities that we had in the south and, and on the loop and things like that. Um, and so is there any way that we can designate certain areas as like, um, construc- uh, kind of what we do with construction zones where if you're speeding in a construction zone, the penalty's harsher? Is there any way that we can identify hotspots around certain areas of the loop where there's a lot of speeding going on? Where we can kind of like, if you're gonna, if you're gonna be caught speeding in these areas, the penalty's harsher for you because we're trying to reduce the incidences on there. And if everybody sees people speeding and rushing along, ignoring lights, then more and more people are gonna start doing it and then everybody's just gonna ignore the speed limits.
Well, un- unfortunately, um, the only one I know of is, is a construction zone where, where penalties are, are doubled.
But it, but can the city implement something like that? Identify hotspots based on your report? And then say, these are gonna be the hotspots and the penalty's gonna be harsher?
Remember, we're limited as a municipality to a class C misdemeanor, which is a five hundred dollar fine.
No, but, but you ca- if you, but if you designate like a construction area, it doubles or triples. So we say, you're now entering Vision Zero, you know, enforcement zone, the penalties are now going to double or triple. Can we do something like that?
Those are state laws. That's, that's, that's what we're limited to because we're a municipality. We can't triple the five hundred dollar fine.
Oh, okay.
Mister mayor, may I, may I add to that?
Go ahead.
Um, Zone, how about, um, something similar to what like Leon Valley, Texas does? Where they still have cameras in place for, um, people that run red lights, right, and they get a citation mailed. Um, it's like a three hundred dollar citation and people don't like to usually pay money. I know at one time in the valley, I don't know what the legality is behind this because I stopped seeing them. They also had radars, right, that would take a picture of your license plates and you'd get a ticket in the mail if you were speeding through an area. Is that something that could als- that could be implemented or? Or is it?
Well, I have my, my experts back here. They're saying it's unconstitutional.
So how come Leon Valley does it?
They shouldn't be doing it anymore.
Oh, okay, yeah. My brother actually paid a ticket, not to me. For running a yellow. So it's unconstitutional?
Yeah.
If I may, mayor? Ju- just one thing, Zone. Um, mayor Pro Temp brought up the item of hiring the fees for people speeding in particular areas. So I'm, I'm well aware that the state of Texas won't allow us to double the fine or triple the fine. But right now, if you're speeding one to nineteen miles over the speed limit, if I'm not mistaken, last time I saw, with a two hundred and thirty dollar fine and that goes up in increments the faster you're going. Um, but as you mentioned, a class C misdemeanor has a total fine or the, the highest amount that the state of Texas, we can charge is five hundred dollars. So is that possible to do that? To, to change the fine in a certain zone area? What councilmember Pro Temp just mentioned was a really good idea, let's just say, entering a Vision Zero area. Fines are at the Texas highest amount that it could possibly be. That we can certainly do, as long as it's not over the five hundred dollar limit. Um, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, if it's a municipal law, then we have, we're limited to the class C limits. But if you're trying to trigger some of the existing state laws, like, you know, uh, construction zones and so forth, then we can look into, uh,
Right, because construction zones, I'm, I'm well aware of, we, we can double the fine, triple the fine. The state of Texas allows us to do so. But as far as the speeding fine here in the city of Laredo, I know it's got to be under five hundred dollars. The municipal court of the fines, the way they run now, it's anywhere, I think the highest is two hundred and ninety dollars, if I remember correctly. Um, but to put a five hundred dollar class C fine on actual Vision Zero zones, I think would be a wonderful thing to bring up. A really good idea.
I got you, uh, councilmember. You mean just to go up to our five hundred dollar cap?
Exactly. In those specific areas, the Vision Zero areas, I think it's, it's a, it's a great idea. Specifically because we're looking at all these, um, fatalities while these actions are occurring.
Councilmember Gutierrez, I'm sorry to interrupt, sir.
Please.
That would probably require, uh, an ordinance because that would be an additional element or a burden to prove for the, for, for the municipal prosecutor to prove. You would have to prove the speed and then we would also have to prove in the little area with the speeding tip.
That's perfect because our, our officers have cameras, so everything's recorded pretty much nowadays. On, on the officer himself and on the patrol unit or the actual motorcycle that's giving out that citation. So, um, I think it's a great idea. If you could please put that on the agenda for the next Public Safety Committee. So we, we, we've discussed all this in those meetings, um, but I think that'd be a great thing to bring up. And we can do that. If we need to add an ordinance to it, we, we certainly will.
An ordinance with a public hearing.
Please.
And is there a way that we can be like a no, uh, zero tolerance, add like a zero tolerance component to where it's mandatory, there's no wa- there's no dropping or there's, it's like a mandatory, uh, community service or some kind of zero tolerance where you're not gonna get your, your fees dropped or anything like that because we're basically saying it's, if you, if you're caught doing this in, in this area, violating this, this is your fine. And there's zero tolerance as far as like waiving or dropping any of these charges.
Yeah, there's usually a judge's discretion, but we can workshop that in the, in the committee and, and bring it back with, uh, with the ordinance and public hearing.
Thank you.
Mayor, I also wanted to just add something about me, um, that if council- Um, that if council feels passionate enough to want to increase state fines, we can also maybe look at a resolution, the council approves, send it to our state rep or state senator and see if they can, you know, push that issue at the state level to increase fines or, or give us other options available for city council. If that's what council wants to do also.
Mayor, that's a good, can I? Mayor? Uh, I know, uh, Representative Raymond has offered to make changes and he can specify certain roads. So if we ask our representatives, I, you know, that it's possible that he can do that or they can do that. Um, Senator Zaffarini also, if she want, would take that on, um, could also do that and just apply it to certain roadways. And maybe we can identify those.
If you make that an amendment to the motion, I'll accept it if Councilmember Cigarraro accepts it from the original motion.
Yes.
So I'll accept the amendment as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion?
Mayor, may I?
Amended.
Um, I, I wonder if there's a way to actually ask our municipal court judge what he sees? Because the, the fines, I take it, go before his court and what he sees in compliance and, um, who he actually is, um, seeing in front of his court as far as, uh, the, the people who are violating the speeding laws. And if he has any insight as to what would be a, a good prescriptive action that would prevent this behavior. Um, it, it does, discussing all this and, and, and creating speed traps in our city does sound a little heavy-handed. So I just would like to see evidence-based suggestions as to how we target reducing speeding in our community.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
For legal, is that a speed trap? Is that considered a speed trap? Because I don't think, I don't think that would be considered a speed trap. I mean, if we're gonna tell people or we're gonna tell people that we don't, are not gonna tolerate this kind of behavior, we don't want this. It's not really a trap, it's more like just setting the standard for our community.
May, I'm happy to explain, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead. Motion to extend the meeting.
Second.
Second. Okay, can we finish or do we have to extend? Okay, all in favor to extend it?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Uh, Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Uh, so, um, when I use the, the term speed trap, I, I did mean colloquially, I think, is the term. Um, just this idea that if we're targeting, um, areas on Loop Twenty where we find problems, so you have one speed limit and then it will drop in speed to, for this targeted area and then you'll increase speed again. And that is my general description of a speed trap, but I did mean it rather offhand. I don't know if there is a particular definition of speed trap, but that was what I was implying.
Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, may I? I, I, I mean, I do think.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I, I do think it is a good suggestion to, um, discuss this also with, to bring in Judge Homias in the conversation. Um, but I think we all are in, in, um, in agreement that we wanna reprioritize Vision Zero, we wanna look at our, our school zones, we want, we want people to be safe and, um, yes, yes, that's all I have.
All right, motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn with the exception of Dr. King who wants to stay here till eleven.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.